Okay, we're good. All right, well, let's call the meeting order. We'll get started and say the pledge.
Pledge and lead to the one of the United States of America. To the Republic, which sustains one nation, under God, and the universal, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I'm sorry, please. Um, all right. I wasn't aware of any changes to the regular agenda. Is that still correct? Seventy?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven eight. It's just a God share agreement.
Got it. Okay. Okay, so seventy is, or eleven A, it's going. I got it. Yeah, eleven A. Anything else?
The motion to approve the regular agenda minus eleven A.
Can we make some motion? Can I get a second? Okay, Sarah, do the second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries consent agenda. Any changes on that, guys?
I didn't have a question. I saw something about Century Link in there. I thought we were on Ready Tech. You can try to look for it too, for you. It is page three. I just saw a Century Link. I thought we were in Ready Tech for some reason.
It could be tied to.
The two eight two telephone and a four nine.
It could, it could be tied to. Like your sewer system, the station, or things like that.
The telephone? So, okay.
That could be to the art systems.
Oh, okay.
I'm assuming, but I could have to look at it.
Okay, that was the only question I had on.
Being the dollar.
No.
I had one question. What is Valley Information Systems, the BDS maintenance? What does BDS stand for?
BDS is the electronic, sorry, electronic building system for checks and credit cards online.
Okay, thank you. Good enough.
Yeah, any other questions?
We didn't have any.
Okay, we'll look for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
I know it's just getting verification to the fact.
Yep, okay.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Just a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries. Okay, approval of city council's special meeting minutes from March twenty seventh. Basically, any changes or corrections on there that we need to do?
Motion to approve.
Okay, Stephanie makes a motion. Can I get a second?
So, I don't know.
Oh, you know what? I, I see that. Actually, there's, there's three that we're approving tonight.
The first one is special meeting in March. The second one is a regular meeting coming over.
Are these different versions from within the packets maybe this weekend?
We have.
They say two and six hours ago. Oh, okay.
So, it's the dozen scratches are legal. So, we give you the, the minutes that we have, and then there's the additional adjustments since.
Okay, I guess I only reviewed the ones that were given this weekend. So, okay.
And we just have a little double check in for. For final.
Okay, so Stephanie's made a motion on the special meeting minutes for the twenty seventh, March twenty seventh. Can I get a second? Sarah has a second. Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Let's see approval of the city council minutes from April third.
So, you all been voted for yet? Thank you. My most respect.
Okay, motion to.
Sarah makes a motion. Can I get a second?
One second.
Stephanie does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Right, motion carries, and we have the special meeting minutes from April seventh meeting.
Yep.
Okay, so we want to make a motion and to accept the minutes as is.
I think the motion acceptance as is for April seventh.
Okay, Jeff makes, Jeff makes the motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
There's a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, public comment. Anybody got anything you want to talk about tonight, minus anything with tax equalization? Go ahead.
I was here on November seventh. I asked about the ordinance against open burning, leaves inside. And said he'd made note of it, came to look into it. Since then, I went to City of Door, Orad, Farwell, West Farwell, and Cass. And I have copies over there, or, or references to get to. So, if you need some help, I'm glad to give you these peruse.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to bring, give them to our city auditor, that'd be fine.
Thank you.
Because I'm tired of smoke in this. It's gonna be smoke season here any day.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else? All right, that will close down public comment. Sheriff's update, we did get a document, but I think we'll wait until next month, or next meeting, and they'll be here to talk about a little bit more. Okay, tax equalization meeting. Paul, it's your show.
Yeah. Director Harry, we just hear what your values are at. So, um, for those of you that don't know me, new faces, today's podcast, the Tax Director. And Seth's here for City of Forests. So, what I'm going to go through with the board today is just kind of what happened throughout the twenty twenty two market. We always use the previous year to determine the values for the subsequent year. So, we're going to see how those sales impacted the values that we have in place that we're proposing to the board today. So, I'll kind of be going over this packet, you know, though, um, this details. Basically, all, all the information where the values are at. So, overall, throughout the year, very interesting year. When we were at the board last time, we were at about four percent interest rates, and that shot up to seven percent in October, and we've been hovering kind of around that six, seven percent quite a while. Throughout all that, just taking the Cass County as a whole, and what values did. In most of Cass County, just taking every part of the west Fargo included, and the areas I cover, and all the rural areas. We saw a ten percent jump in the median price, or median selling price of house. So, we saw that go from two hundred ninety thousand all the way to three hundred twenty thousand. Now, it's a little different in City of Forests. We actually saw that overall median value go up eighteen percent. So, we saw more girls here, or more, the higher sales prices, I guess, than what were typical of the overall market. We actually saw it go from two hundred ninety eight thousand up to three hundred fifty two thousand one hundred. So, it's that eighteen percent jump. And this information's all from the multiple, uh, realtors, multiple listing service that would query this from, just kind of pull this, so you can look that up at your own convenience, too. Uh, that's a little different from what we're seeing, I guess, countywide. We saw still dip a little bit from where we were at last year, and then went down eighteen percent, but we actually saw more sales this year than last year, about a thirty percent increase. So, you gotta take what's going on in the county. Um, it's a little different in City of Forests. Uh, that's just due to all the tremendous growth we're getting out here, both residential. And this year, especially compared to what we had in previous years in the commercial area. A lot of that commercial growth in your industrial park areas just due to that marketplace, just taking off like crazy over the past few years. We saw the industrial land just significantly increased in most developments, not just in the horse, but in Cassington, Mapleton, all their industrial parks. Expand tremendously, actually, over the past couple of years. So, this. The overall evaluations that we're looking at this year, so when classifying the properties, we'll start with the A land. That's actually up nine and a half percent. That's just due to average A price going from twelve hundred twenty four dollars an acre up to thirteen hundred fifty dollars an acre. Now, I'm gonna sound like a very low number compared to what the market of A land is, but we don't value A land at market. It's based off of, uh, it's, it's based off the annual returns that are studied, running cap rate and back into it. That's all done at the state level. They determine A values on December every year, and they send those off to us. So, most A land got a nine, nine and a half percent adjustment. Commercial overall, uh, you're seeing last year, we had forty nine million, two hundred nineteen thousand in commercial value. We actually have, that's increased to ninety three million, seven hundred fifty four thousand, three hundred dollars in commercial value this year. So, almost doubling commercial value. A lot of that's, like I said, the new rule that we're getting. I think everybody can see it when you drive along a hundred, then on a main street here, just, just some of the some of the building permits that have been finalized. So, that, that was about sixteen, of that forty four million, about sixteen point three million of that was due to that new rule. Lot, lot of the rest was due to land adjustments that we did. Areas getting planted that were previously A land now be best valued as commercial land. So, that's a big reason that we saw increase in valuations there. On residential value, uh, we saw that go up one hundred forty six billion, two hundred twenty six thousand two hundred where we're at last year. Now, ninety three million of that was from new growth. So, it's from all the permits that were taken out throughout the city. We also did some land adjustments, um, just within the city of Forests, we started to notice. For ourselves analysis, some of the larger tracts of land, so some of the subdivisions that had acre laps, plus, um, we reviewed those to see if they were in tolerance. We started to have a lot of those values kind of dip down below what the median was at for a lot of similar, uh, well, not similar properties, but other properties in the city. Those land adjustment to those, um, but aside from anything that was reviewed from sale, or had land adjustment, or had permitted work, average increase, you look at that, probably around the four and a half, six and a half percent range. So, that's where it, it means never going to be a perfect number, but majority of places would fall within that range. Obviously, your permits pretty steady than where we were at last year, uh, but the valuation of the permits is significantly, yeah, significantly more at last year, and that's all again, to that commercial permitting values, bringing that all up. So, overall taxable value that we're at today, that we're recommending, is going to be a little slightly different than what I have recorded on here. I'll kind of go over that, too. But, uh, as of when we sent out notices of increase, and we did send out fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred six, I guess, notices of increase this year. The total true, uh, true and full valuation for the city is seven hundred sixty seven million, seven hundred forty nine thousand four hundred. So, after those notices were mailed out, uh, we received nineteen calls, and, um, I guess before I get into that, I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about the land adjustments. So, I put this sheet right here with the green. Either with one area with the nineteen falls that even have more concentrated in one area, and they start to review some of the properties out there, go to recent houses, meet with all. And, yeah, we, we started to understand there's maybe some issues with there, like glass lighting. You know, the gravel roads, on septic, just some other issues that they were running into in those neighborhoods that we did kind of feel it needed another. So, drove to areas, kind of looked at some other similar areas. The area I'm talking about was the country acres to solve. So, we looked at what we considered a similar area of the Ponderosa and how we had the values there. So, what we did is we made, we did make a little adjustments to those land values, so they mimic the exact ones that we have up in that pond rose edition. So, those valuations that we're showing there, and those adjustments to it, we're just asking the board today to allow us to just those to that recommended value that we have there. Aside from that, there was nineteen people that did call. Some of them are already going to be on that list that had the land adjustments, too. Majority of those, some people just call sometimes. They just want to know, um, you know, what the notice means. They might just bought a new property, never received one in their life. Uh, so we go over that with them. A lot of times just due to new construction. There's a few on there. We thought the permitted work was finished. It wasn't, so we took that off. Sometimes it's just as simple as we have a conversation, send them some sales, um, just ask them, look those over and talk, contact us if they have any questions. So, just situations like that. But there are adjustments on that sheet as well. And after, there's also a new call that rolled in kind of after the fact. So, there's about five houses that we still have pending review.
Six, actually.
Six?
Add me, because I believe there's a permit of work that was added to mine, too.
Okay, no problem. And we'll get into like anybody else that wants to, um, be on the list. So, those five ones, we'll be looking at, uh, in more detail, kind of getting back. I know there was one on there. Uh, we, we have sent some information to the gentleman. And just kind of wanted to keep the conversation going on it, so we can sit down with that individual. Before I get into anybody that would wish to appeal, are there any questions forward that I can answer, go over in more detail if you would?
You got questions?
Start, Jeff?
If you want me to.
Go ahead.
Okay, so I'll start my, my list of questions with, uh, the email that I sent to you, um, at least to your office.
Sure.
Very basic email I forwarded here to all of the, uh, people sitting at the front table. Um, pointing out probably a operational flaw on your guys' part. Listing off a list of items that could possibly have raised your assessed value, but not actually saying what raised your assessed value, and then having your office request that the landowner provide proof otherwise. Which, if you don't actually tell somebody why you're raising the value, how are they supposed to provide proof otherwise? And stemming from that email, and I believe that was the only correspondence you and I had. I, I believe you did call me on my way to my father's funeral. Okay, and I, I couldn't take that call. Okay? I don't believe I talked to you or anybody from your office. Outside of that email, is that correct? I, I did receive one correspondence from your office, from a appraiser that just explained why the value was set the way it was.
Right. I, I believe you sent some, uh, sales analysis, uh, that happened in your areas.
Correct.
To make the plans, so.
That was the only. The only correspondence we had, correct? When you, when you contact your, uh, office at the county, is somebody able to contact in your behalf? Can, let's say Chad, on behalf of Julie, can Chad send an email saying he's appealing for Julie? Or can he ask on behalf of Julie?
No, you need the owner.
You own another property. Can anybody else ask?
Uh, you, you have to have an interest in the property.
Okay.
So, like basically ownership, some people have a contract for deed.
Okay.
And now it comes.
Okay, fair enough. So, based on my simple email pointing out an operational flaw, the county sent a vehicle down our road, which I happened to notice, because I, I noticed every vehicle that drives down the road, right, Jim? And, and when you drive by my house, what do you do? And what do I do? I, I waved back. Thank you, Jim. We're a very friendly neighborhood. Thank you. Um, so just from that little email, where I was pointing out that, you know, people don't understand why they got raised. You guys went down there. Now, you said you had some other people contact you, I'm assuming.
I think there was five in that neighborhood.
Okay. Probably wondering about the same thing. What, how are they supposed to probably defend their whatever stance if they don't even know why it was raised in the first place? Um, so, um, I'm trying to ask, I don't want to say on, on their behalf or fight on their behalf, because this should be everybody in the city who received the letter. I think you said there was over a thousand.
Yeah, fifteen hundred and six.
That, in the future, to at least explain, especially if it's such a large percentage. I mean, I, I, I can't remember the percentage of mine. We'll just say roughly twenty five percent, probably a little higher, if you and I agree. Increased value that the average citizen, somebody that is not in my position, would probably not know any of the happenings of the city that would actually drive that value. Would you agree to that?
I don't really, depends on all in tune, I suppose, the markets, but yeah, I suppose generally.
Okay.
Unless you know some of the sales.
So, you could probably see my point that I was trying to make, that how, how are you supposed to reply back with any kind of proof if you don't know why in the first place?
Yeah.
And so, I sit here and I look at that, that value, and then I receive a phone call that you guys are lowering that value, which, okay, I understand. And then I just heard you speak, you know, presenting just a few minutes ago, that my neighborhood, my neighbors are going to be lowered if, if we accept it. Is that, is that the words you just used?
Well, because we sent out the notices already.
Yep.
So, we're, we're asking for those adjustments.
So, those adjustments will not automatically be made. If you guys say that you can, in error, you're not going to automatically make those adjustments. It has to be approved by this board tonight. Is that correct?
At this point, yeah. Yes, adjustment we made after the values were sent out.
Okay.
And after the, um, so we're just pointing out the work that we did after notices were sent out.
Okay.
I guess I may have misunderstood standing.
So, 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 to come full circle to my point, if this council were to decide to vote that down, none of those neighbors of mine will have that value lowered from their initial letter. Is that correct, sir?
I feel we need to adjust it to that amount. We did the, uh, more in-depth review of it, looked at everything compared to like similar areas. Felt that the adjustment did need to be made, so I'd probably push forward that adjustment to counting more regardless.
Regardless.
Needs to be adjusted at this point.
Yeah, understood. Sarah, go ahead with your questions.
Aaron, I don't want you to kill your arm. We'll get to you in just a minute. I've got a question. So, just. Say, I know, I know. So, just, just bear with us here. I wanted to clarify that the folks that got letters, and I, I just want to make sure I'm very clear on process. So, the folks that got letters are people that incurred more than a fifteen percent increase.
A ten percent.
Ten percent.
Thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay, so anyone that have over a ten percent adjustment would have gotten a letter. And that adjustment, for the most part, is based on market factors that your office evaluates, yes?
Right.
Based on real estate sales, based on, give me the, the general explanation, so everyone here understands.
Yeah, so we run a sales adjusting market approach. We look at what happened in the market previous year, determine what the values need to be for the current year. And if we see any, uh, inadequacy use of areas that coming in too high, too low, we try to dive more into depth on that. And, uh, make sure we're bringing everybody up to a fair market value. The main, the main thing is to make sure that somebody in a two hundred thousand dollar house and someone in a million dollar house are all assessed equitably. And what that does in the end is it, it spreads a fair tax burden on, on everybody based off the market value.
How long have, has your, have you been doing this with your office?
Uh, with Cass, how long have I been with Cass County?
Cass County.
Six years I've been with Cass County, and then about ten years before that in West Fargo.
Excellent. So, I, I'm going to ask a question that's going to be difficult, and I'm hoping that you can help me understand.
Very good. Water here.
It's something that, uh, it's something that a lot of the, the residents have asked, and it's something that crossed my mind when I got my letter, right? So, a couple of years ago, we took a, uh, what do you call it? A, a writing of the.
Yeah, reappraisal that was done.
The reappraisal that was done several years ago, and it resulted in some pretty significant adjustments for people, just to get us back within certain percentage points for what it needed to be for Century Code. I need you to explain that to everyone here, so that they can understand why we have to be within a certain percentage.
Okay, yeah, great question. And.
And there's more.
Okay. I started going to the question, yeah. You know, the state wants us to be within, uh, tolerance of ninety to a hundred percent. So, in its simplest form, you rate all the sales, everything that happens in Morris, Idaho, and where is that median assessed value to sell price land? If it's at eighty five percent, it typically means we got to bring the values up. You're, you know, you're seventy five percent. Yeah, it's that's where we'll focus on the individual areas. We start to see characteristics that they're out of tolerance more than one other area. But every year, we review that sale, those sales, and we adjust accordingly to the next year. I may suck those factors. And then we break it down in more detail through, like, sorry, I don't hear me, but that, I can play that guy. All right. But no, we'll stress by based on different characteristics, style, build a house, location, subdivisions, um, you know, just numerous factors that we dive into more detail on that. But we do have to be within that ninety, our goal is to be within that ninety to a hundred percent of what the previous sales were. Now, what's happened since that reappraisal took place, it, the markets went bonkers for like three years.
That, that.
Probably thirty to forty percent growth, and that's just what happened. That's happened to everybody. Uh, it, it's, it's unbelievable. I don't think I've ever seen in my, what is it, seventeen years now, however long I've been doing this, growth to that extent on just market value growth. And you can follow that with some of the building activity that's been going on here. Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been exceptional, so.
So, that's the extent of, of the next part of my question is, we went from this, you know, leveling, if you will, we'll solve with that, to get us within that tolerance, those percentage points, that ninety to a hundred percent, because we had a shortfall from previous years, right?
Right.
So, a couple of years ago, I was my very first year on council. I'll never forget it. This fine lady in yellow was there for that meeting, along with several others. We had a packed house.
Yeah.
Everyone was through the roof because they were taking thirty, forty percent hits, right? Everyone's going, whoa. And we explained to them, we have to do this leveling because this is what we have to do to be within law per century code to make sure that we're following process and procedure for the state. Okay? So, we did that. That was just a couple of years ago. I'm now in my second term, and we're seeing unprecedented growth again. So, at that time, I was under the impression we were going to be making adjustments three, five, seven percent. I mean, no more than ten percent, right? At any given time, that it would be an adjustment, but it wasn't going to be major over time. And now I sit and, and I, I got my letter again this year. I've gotten a letter every year, and I'm going whoa, like my taxes since I moved in parts have doubled. And I have to say that that's a little bit shocking. And I, I'm contesting it because I believe there's an error in a replacement online. So, you and I'll talk about that.
Yeah.
But, um, outside of that, I think that's some. I think that's some of the question that's coming in is how are, how is the county recognizing this? Why does Horace seem to be so out of balance with some of the other communities around us?
And I I would say I don't feel like I'm out of balance at all, as I said, that four, four and a half to six and a half percent. Uh, that was relatively light in comparison to what we're looking at countywide, we had to do a lot of uh. You know, eight to nine majority of cities, so I feel it's the areas that had the inaccurate act in uh where we're the lower tolerance. It's obviously the larger tracts of land, we're far behind what happened with that. When the reappraisal was done years ago, there just weren't vacant lots of that size that we had, we're able to. You know, back it with enough information, supporting information, support those sales over the past three years. Newer tracks of land, people breaking off selling seventy thousand acres. That wasn't happening four years ago in your city.
So our town, you know, being as small as we are, kind of in the centralized area in general. We're surrounded on all sides by vacant land, so now we're playing this up again.
Uh, maybe on some of the larger tracts of land.
Yeah.
But I I'm feeling comfortable that we're getting it up to where it needs. So, it, I mean, if you start to see it. Go up anymore, we just gotta keep up with what it's doing, if if it goes from that seventy to a hundred thousand. When they start selling at that range. Those are cells we look at.
And I'm asking because it's it's a, it's it's a hard hit for me to explain to some people, and that's my job.
Yeah.
They elected me and everyone else.
Oh, absolutely.
To be able to explain this, and and quite frankly, I. Had a conversation with several people and said, you know, several years ago, we did this leveling up, and and we shouldn't see anything this crazy again, and. And it hasn't been crazy, crazy, but like you said, we're seeing some things out of the norm here, some things that you haven't seen in a sixteen plus seventeen plus year career. And so here I sit again in the hot seat, just a couple of years later, trying to explain why people's valuations are going through the roof. And at at some point, as a council, we have to figure out. What we're doing wrong, or what the city's doing wrong.
We, you do absolutely nothing wrong.
Question I have, have.
What the state is doing wrong.
Pause this.
Yeah, we're, you're doing absolutely nothing wrong, it's just, we value, it's ad form state, we value at market. And that market takes up. That's what you're keeping up with, and it's just, I I mean, I think everybody's aware of how much it's been exploding.
It's terrifying because there's, I I'm fearful that it's gonna drag some people on the water ship.
I, obviously, I think about that all the time, too, that's, it's scary with interest rates where, what we were saying, hovering around six, seven percent, where's buying power now, where are you?
Where are you shooting?
But it's the same sense, where are you gonna go?
So do you see the market going down because of what you just said?
I try not to predict and get out the crystal ball of what's gonna happen, I have no idea, I thought it was gonna. Once I saw it get up to six, seven percent, that seven percent in October. I thought we were gonna see huge dips, but we didn't, we actually saw more sales in the second half of the year than the first half of the year in Cas County. The rural areas I studied, I did not think that was gonna happen. What we can look at is historically, what has happened? You take some of the worst. Years with inflation and interest rates, uh, in the seventies to nineties, I mean, we're seeing. Interest rates through the roof, inflation going up six percent a year, uh. But what can you do, what's our biggest cost, is our cost to shelter ourselves? Unless you're of, have a family with a few kids, your daycare costs are maybe way higher than that, but. One thing you can do to offset some of those rising inflations is lock in at a rate that's fixed. So we might see people purchase more, um, and still get some, some market gains during that time, it's hard to say. I mean, we're just throwing out guesses what might happen, but if we do see a decrease in value in twenty twenty-three. When I'm studying those sales, if I start going, this value is at three fifty and it sold for three hundred, this value is at. Uh, you know, four hundred, sold for three fifty, yeah, we we gotta start decreasing them because we're too high. So we haven't seen that yet.
So you. There, there is no formula, or or maybe, maybe you can help me understand. Is there a portion of your formula that takes into account? Outside measures that would impact people such as inflation, such as increased costs, such as. Uh, increases in interest rates and things of that nature, I mean, is is part of that into your formula or not at this time?
Not directly, but it's all based on sales, and I think it's safe to say some of that inflation is gonna determine what people can buy. And what a property sells for, right, uh, it might determine if it's gonna sell quicker, be on the market longer. So it's not directly, we're saying inflation's at this, it's gonna lower everything, you know, X percent. But it's hundred percent, we just view what happened with the market, what we're saying so for.
You know.
What we have to turn into the state.
Please go. Well, in talking with, um, I did talk with a few realtors about some of the sales that happened in Horace last year. And they said that, I mean, they were having bidding wars, I mean, they were having people go. Anywhere from fifty to forty thousand dollars over asking price. Because of interest rates being the lowest ever. Um, the fact that there was a lot of probably COVID money floating around, I mean. Just in my opinion, when you have, when you have that happening. Um, these homes are settling for more than what they're actually worth, and then. This is what happens, um. I guess my question is, I was told at the last time, the last time we, I sat here and had this discussion with you. For some reason, somebody mentioned to me that. Um, like, I I guess I don't understand why I vote on this, if. Like, you guys can override whatever we say anyways, can somebody explain that to me? Because I do not understand that, so what's.
Talking about the.
Yes.
Commission.
Yes, I, can you explain that to me?
Well, there's three levels, there's the city board, the county board, and the state board. Um, and. Usually what happens at most of these boards, or whatever happens at the boards, we present that at the county level. Um, it, they do have the ability to to alter things at that level. Based off what decisions have been made here, um, there's been situations sometimes. Somebody's just denied all all the assessments for the year. So. You know, I, you'll present that to the next level and they can bring that on.
So, try remember, and I I talked to you, whether it was last year or the year before, um. And how rare it is to ever see assessed values go down. I believe we talked about Dickinson, that was, memory served me correct? You said it takes a few years to even ever see that or realize that, your understanding?
Well. I feel, hey, I remember in our conversation, you're, you're trying to figure out, yeah, when would you see it on the tax side?
If, if, if something really went wrong with the economy.
Yep.
And the housing market plunged. How long would it take?
Yeah.
For the residents to get any relief if this route. Had to play out once a year. Before they ever got their chance to get it lowered, before they lost their homes, is that what I'm getting at?
And I'll, I'll try to explain those best against the county, or to the council there, pardon me, uh, so. Just saying your scenario, just say twenty twenty-three.
Yes, sir.
Values go way down. Um, we adjust those values for twenty twenty-four. And you would see that on your tax statement you received December of twenty twenty-four. That's due in tw- early twenty twenty-five. So that's where I think we kind of were saying, almost a three-year window where you're evolving twenty twenty-three. Uh, market affecting twenty twenty-four values, but the taxes you pay in twenty twenty-five. That. That makes sense, or does that answer your question?
It, it answers my question, um, it hopefully also raises my fear, is that. We are in a market right now where things are so hot that I, I can't possibly see it. Continuing like this, um, you, you have all the signs of inflation. Um. You have, hell, all the signs of a recession starting, um. How great of one, I don't know, and obviously I don't have a crystal ball, just like you don't, okay? Um, if, if I were to try to play it safe, obviously, you know what my answer would be to. If, if we were to vote it down and just say, you know what? We understand where you're coming from, I promise you. I believe you are doing your job as it is written out by state law, I do not doubt that, I have no hard feelings against you at all, and I hope you understand that. Um. We have a city to try to. Protect. And I, I don't know how we keep this pace up, like you said. I I truly see people being forced out of their homes, and I, and I hope that. You understand that, and I realize you don't, might not have control over that. But how do we raise awareness to a bigger, higher level at the state level to say, hey, guys? Maybe you need to revisit your equation on what you're doing.
Yeah.
Because this, this is tough every year. I mean, we're, we're the most hated people here, and kind of what she just said, no matter what, well, okay, fair. Fair enough, um. But as she just pointed out, no matter what we say to it, it can get overruled. So. We, we are effectively just a rubber stamp until you get to the next level.
Wait, no.
And, Frank, Frank, go ahead.
Go ahead, I, I wanna jump in because. You know, we had to do this correction a couple of years ago because the, the equalization happened, right? Or it wasn't aligned with where it needed to do, so if you voted down. What position does that put us in?
Well, what, what I would, what I would recommend, if if you're feeling. The need to make adjustments to the values I'm presenting, is at least. Have a, have a recommended, like a written recommendation, like you said, or reasoning as to why.
Yeah.
Not just a brash, you know, we're denying all the valuations, because what you're gonna be doing is throwing out a ton of new growth.
Right.
Totally understood.
Uh, but I'd also recommend. Being there at our county meeting and explaining what you're explaining.
So lay your stuff.
You're just saying, this is why we made this decision at our level. Um, this is what we feel. I think that'd be the appropriate way to go, I don't know, we've never had anybody do that in the past, like I said, we've had situations where people were just like. You know, denying, denying the values, so then everything resets back to twenty twenty-two, like I said. So you lose all that commercial growth, you lose all the residential.
Back here.
Yeah.
I just think it's. We've taken some pretty big hits over the last several years, and. While you respect the work that your office does, and the work that you do, because I know how hard this work has been to my home several times. But I I'm, I'm seeing some of this, and I'm fearful in. Accepting big, big changes like this repeatedly, because it has to be a cycle. And, you know, if you take ten percent year over year, it's a matter of time before you're at a hundred percent, and then you're going again, you know? And I I'm fearful what's gonna happen when our town.
But I just wanted to remind you that the typical was four and a half to six and a half, yeah, there was ones that went over, um, a lot of that was due to permitted work. A lot of that was due to property lands being split, um, new development, things like that, one, like a. Lot of acreage going into two hundred parcels, we send notes to install those, so, uh. I guess I just want to let you know, it's that four and a half, six and a half. In the general scheme of things, what we're looking at countywide. Um, it's, it's not that much in comparison to, I've done, right, like fifty of these boards already. And I think on, on an average, that's probably at the lowest rate we're averaging.
So I do have a a couple of questions.
Sure.
Um, and I understand the state standards that we need to come within ninety to a hundred percent of value. But I think in the discussion that I've heard tonight is there, there is been a bit of wiggle room in the process, as we discussed.
Yeah.
Um. So, I I think for myself and probably everyone else, I, I think. The goal is we want to ensure that properties in Horace are only increased to the base minimum. That is needed to comply with the state statute, and when I see this, this wiggle room. I mean, if some properties can be given a downward reduction, have all properties been reviewed again so that they're not increased. Even a dollar more than the, what they need to be, I mean, I completely agree with Jeff, where. There are a lot of difficult economic times right now, and a lot of hardship for residents. And I need to be assured that we're not going a dollar higher than what we need to to comply.
I think you have some great questions, and, um. What I would recommend to you. Is to reach out to the state petition.
Okay.
To see if you've reached the size to where you can run your own individual sales analysis. What that would do is allow me, now, I I break yours down individually to, I already do that, but. The way the system works right now, I assess Cas County, excluding Fargo and West Fargo, they handle their own independent cell ratio.
And what population is that?
I can't remember off the top of my head, I don't know if it's population-based or parcel account-based, or. But what I would recommend is allowing for your own independent cells ratio study. Um, to where we're just looking, Horace is looking at Horace, and we make adjustments based off that. You have to have thirty cells in a year, which you guys are getting, can't be new construction, it has to be, it could resell the property. Um. And then you'd also be running one independently for your commercial class properties, too, if you don't hit thirty cells in one year, go back to the previous year and review it. If you don't hit thirty in that year, go back another year, keep doing that until you hit thirty cells, you guys will never hit thirty commercial cells over a three-year period. Um, it just, it won't happen. Um, you, you'll get a lot of new construction, but it's. That's one area where I just know you won't hit thirty cells in the recommended time, residential, you have no problem. I would reach out to them and just see, I I've never seen a city. Get to that point to where where they start running their own, but I know it's a, uh, something you can do.
How would that be different than what your service that you're providing to us today, or?
Sure.
How would it be different?
Always aim to be at ninety-four percent. That's ninety-four, ninety-five percent is where I recommend, or when I do my study, so when I'm breaking down your area right now, that's where I'm trying to do. And that's what I do countywide.
Can we just say we would like you to evaluate at the minimum of ninety?
You can make that, as a board, you can make that recommendation.
And I do just have one additional question, if I may. Um, I understand the, the trigger of the notification letters, is the ten percent or three thousand dollars?
Ten and three.
Ten and three. So the properties that are below those, those factors. Um, when did, yeah, when do they get the notification of their, like you said, most people are in the four to, four and a half to six, when do those people get their notification?
In August, when estimated tax statements are are sent out, so once they got budget and July, July budget. Once that's all finalized, they send out an estimated tax statement to everybody in county in August.
Again, and I realize that is the policy of how the letters go out, but I guess I would just like, like to make a, a policy statement of. Um, I think even a, an increase of four and a half to six every year, or seven or eight or nine, which when trigger letter is a lot, I mean, like Sarah mentioned, year over year. That really gets to be a lot, I mean, I realize that that's not a process that you follow, but, um.
And with the, it's a little late now, but with the legislative session and that just took place, those would have been great questions to bring up, to bring up your concerns.
That would be my question, I guess, for the mayor, I guess, you said there was possibly two bills in the legislature that, how did they end up?
I don't know if they've done anything with the evaluations process, though, bills that went through there, I know there was one, but I don't.
It was a study.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, then that's where it landed.
The study.
Okay.
And I think we can remember just a little bit on our level, too, that we do have some. Uh, local authority, as, as we realize, we don't have all of the authority, but we do have some local authority in the adjustment of our mill rate for, for residents.
Yeah, and that's all determined on, and again, in July, what you decide is important, but you say, this is what we need for a budget.
We can, we can reduce mills to offset some of the rapidly rising property values, however, you have to touch all of the.
Yeah.
Taxing entities on your tax statement, too, to see a full.
And I would just say, just, I mean, just obviously budget for what you need.
Yeah. Paul, you want to give, I mean, just more a little, I know we've kind of gone through this a little bit, but it was in two thousand nineteen, was that when the state kind of got into the. Trying to force counties to do, basically to the cities, because like, for us, we had never had a full city valuation, ever, from what I understand, but in twenty nineteen, they passed the law. That the county was to go around and make sure that all the cities' valuations were where they're supposed to be, right? What I'm, what I'm wondering now is, okay, so they went and did that, and we've been on this process now since twenty nineteen. Is it something where we should be, we talked about, maybe the next time the legislative body meets at the state level, that we have some conference about that to see whether, um. They've gone the overboard with some of this a little bit, and we need to maybe take some of the parameters, change them a little bit, so that we aren't dealing with these. You know, because we're, our town is extraordinary, I understand that, because I don't know, not that many other towns in the state are going through it, we're going through it, especially with valuations, I understand that. So they look at us and it's an exception, I've been out there, we talked about this with different legislatures, and of course, they always say, well, you guys are abnormal, you know, because, and I understand that. But for these situations going forward, you know, I'm almost wondering if that's something we should be looking at and reviewing a little bit more for these unusual circumstances, so that there might be some. I'll say caps, but you know what I'm getting at, that there's some level of control there, that when we do have these extraordinary circumstances, that we can intervene in that at this level. And not have to worry about county and state.
Yeah, and I think, um, like Councilman is Lance Room.
Yes.
Yeah, brought up, I think that might help. You'd be able to curb some of that at the local level, if that's something. You'd be able to curb some of that at the local level. That's something that I mean, so I would definitely start with that.
But then doing our own individual sales balances. Um, that means we have to bring in a separate fund to do residential and.
No, I'd still be doing it unless you want to, I mean, you need to get hired, that's it, obviously, yeah, too, but.
But we would petition the state that your organization will still be a part of that.
You ready? Yeah.
I have my questions answered for the landing.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, good questions, good conversation. Um, and yeah, any others pop up, obviously, just.
We didn't have a question in the audience.
Yep. You guys are all done. Already up here. Okay. In the audience, yep, go ahead.
They sent me that MLS listing of the properties that they assess against our property. And if, if the taxes are going to go up and that's going to drive us out. I'm afraid nobody's going to want to buy our property because it's going to be so outlandishly taxed that they're going to look somewhere else. Um. And then this was Nolan Middinger in, in Cass County here. He came back with, okay, well, I'll just, how about if we lower it thirty thousand dollars? And I'm like, all right, so you're just gonna, you know, all of a sudden, since I appealed it and I, I. Questioned the MLS listings because they were assessing my property, which is twenty-four hundred square feet. They were assessing it with six thousand square feet properties, nine thousand square feet properties. And I'm just like, okay, well, this is like insane, you know? Um, my house value is probably. In the lower end of what they were giving us in the MLS listing. But when they showed me what they were going to increase my property to. There's no way. No. You know, so I think it's in, I, I, I think. The Cass County is just, you know, they see money thriving. Because all of this growth is happening and it needs to be across the board. It doesn't need to be targeted in any certain area. So that's my feelings. I don't have questions, but I'm pretty blunt, so.
So let me ask you this, when did they come back to with the decrease? Has that just been recently after? Because I know they talked to a bunch of people in country acres. Okay. Same day, okay. No, I'm just curious as to when it happened, because I know like there was talk about that there was some issues down in country acres because of some sales of land.
Yeah.
That were higher, so they based a lot of that on that. And Paul, correct me if I'm wrong on that, right? There was some.
Yes.
Sale.
It's been a timing thing on her, on their part, but we still have that listed on, on your list, their name. We haven't finalized anything on that. We were going to ask you to still allow us to work with them because. We did send out the information, um, as, as they said, uh, it was just all part of the land adjustments that we did out of that area. So we just like called and we, you know.
Right, no.
Would just switch, but it's.
But I mean, would you be willing to meet with them when we're done with this?
We, we, we presented their name, uh, to the board on that list and that's part of the needs review.
Okay, so just double check. You had a question?
Lives up in North Fork. Oh, they said its value is seven hundred and forty thousand dollars. Has a little over an acre line. About five thousand square feet. That house was for sale for seven hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars for thirteen months. And never sold. They're pricing people out of their homes.
Did that property ever sell?
Yeah, I was going to say that ever so, still sitting there.
So, so let me ask you a question, Paul.
Sure.
Um, the three pieces of property that you guys referenced, uh, from Mr. Middinger. Um, not one of those has a house built on it yet. I believe the mayor and I had this talk, uh, private, um. How do we prevent against? People buying land for speculation that it's just going to go up in value and constantly driving up our prices? And I know it's a crystal ball question again. I promise you, I do know that answer already. But do you guys take into account that maybe land really isn't that high? And the point I want to bring up is that. We have a developer sitting in the room, no offense, I see you back there. Um, if they aren't willing to buy a piece of property for that price, shouldn't that send off some sort of? Bills that, man, if he isn't willing to buy it or wanting to buy it, I mean, I shouldn't say wanting to buy it, but. Has not purchased it. If, if individual people are, are purchasing it, but they haven't actually put a home on it. To me, I would be leery of that. Um, and I, and I know I, I didn't ask Jase, but I did ask Key. Uh, obviously, I know the, the lot right next to me, which is the one that has been referenced for this particular talk and also Wall Avenue. They did pull a permit. They haven't actually executed on it yet, anything. And so I, I did try to reach out to that neighbor and eventually heard back from him. But if people aren't building yet because it's too expensive, or maybe they overpurchased, or maybe they're not even planning on. So, so I know at least one of those properties that you referenced. Literally, I called that person and they have no intention to build at all. And it was the second highest priced per acre in that list. Once again, you just have people. Driving up land price in hope that they make money instead of putting money in the stock market. They're just putting money in land and they're, they're doing that constant churn. But it's the real people that are actually living here that are paying the price for it. So to, to my, my first set of questions, and I know it probably wasn't clear. I have never fought. For myself. And I continue that. I don't care what you put my home at. I look you in the eye and I say that. What I am angry about. Is country acres as almost a whole just got reassessed to be lowered. And all it took was an email asking. What do you want me to ha- send in for proof when you didn't actually tell me why you were raising it? And it's almost like you're putting a divide between me and my neighbors. And I hope you understand that. And I don't mean that to you, and I promised you that when I said I'm not angry with you at all. But somewhere in this process, something happened and I'm trying to put a finger on what happened here. Because to your point earlier, if we don't approve. Then those lowerings may not happen. What? You said you would make the recommendation at the county level, but they may not happen at that level either. Is that correct? Huh?
To, to lower them?
To lower what, what you had for the, for the larger parcels.
Be adjusted.
Be adjusted. So because I. Okay.
Any reason why not?
Is it possible that? The better part of that particular part of the call and getting fire in on this maybe brought something to your attention?
And as I said, just meeting with people out there, going through a few of the houses, talking to some of the problems they have, you know, especially after winters like this. Um, you know, lack of light is basically, I mean, you guys are all aware of it. You've been aware of it probably more so than I was, but it's. Rural is kind of like a township setting in a city.
Yeah.
And. When we looked at the vacant land sales, you know, like I said, one happens, you don't think anything of it. Start to get a couple more, you go, oh my gosh, this is, it's just one person overpaying, it's a market now. Uh, that's where we adjusted for it. But then going out meeting with people, that's where we felt, no, it probably, it probably needs. Backed up a little bit because there are some issues that we just, from a top talent coach, weren't going to clear.
I, I have that question and I just wanted to know what's your, your response because it happened to me and my neighbors a couple of years ago. Where, um, we have larger lots in a central part of town. And I brought up some questions and then I had a couple of neighbors that brought up some questions and then pretty soon you guys came out and said, oh, wait. We didn't see this or it didn't come to our attention because you were looking at the overall market. And I realized that you're spreading across the whole county. So I do want to give a little credit there. Because that exact same thing happened to me and my neighbors back in twenty nineteen. I think around, around that time. So I'm looking at these and it, it looks like there's been some adjustments made. And Jeff, I don't want to minimize your concerns here at all because you did send an email and there were some, it looks like some. Uh, across the board adjustments made, accounts were made, I can't speak to, but I think Paul can. And I think that there's a bigger picture here. I got thinking about it. And I, I think that that may be a contributing factor to why you're seeing some of what we're seeing.
Okay.
So I just want to make that comment to be fair.
And I, I guess I do hope that the optics of what occurred then in, in Jeff's neighborhood is, is being evaluated across the city. Um, and I guess I, this is my first tax equalization meeting as a new council member. Um, so I don't quite know what the process is going forward, but I don't know if there would be something we would want to explore of. You said that your goal is ninety-four to ninety-five percent to maintain within the standard. Um, I mean, what is our options to? Uh, just go bare, bare minimum, given, given the issues that we're encountering. I mean. I don't know, I don't know if that's what the council wants to do, but I mean, wh- what if, what if we say, well, we only, we don't want to go a dollar more. Then we have to, to stay in compliance and that would be the ninety percent. Uh, what, what does that look like?
It's still, what would that look like from a recommendation standpoint that you'd have to make in support or?
Or what the pro- what the process is going forward, I guess. If, if that is a decision we were to make tonight or a decision to just. Uh, I mean, I guess I'm asking one more time to clarify what are the options?
Yeah, and, and how you thought the right as a board, uh, you make adjustments where you see inequities. So if you feel it needs to be adjusted. You can make that regulation. And then, as I said, I'll just have to present, you know, the, the findings from this meeting at my, at my board. Uh, so some difficulties I'd see at this, at this point that might come up or questions that would arise, obvious. You have everybody else at ninety-four, ninety-five percent. Why would we want to go lower on that? That for one city.
We're only at ninety-four, ninety-five. What's the methodology behind that?
It's just worse. So when you get bigger swings in the market, we found it just works best to be at that. So you're not always. If you're, sometimes we're at the low end, you get a giant swing like we did last two years, then you're always sending ten percent to everybody. So if you're already starting out, it, it just, it, it helps the process that are in, from not. Um, riding the waves as much when you're on like the, the, either the high point or the low point. All that stuff.
You see more of a buffer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And do I understand correctly that West Fargo does their own assessments?
West Fargo Fargo will do their own assessments.
Do you know what their parameters are?
Uh, it usually, oh, ninety-four, ninety-five percent. Yeah. That's kind of where I would go at that too, just because of what you're looking at. Going on in our community.
That's been the consistency with West Fargo and here. I know, I know there was some conversation about that when they went through and did the first valuation. When we did that, I think it was twenty nineteen, wasn't it, that you guys, we did the big jump?
Right.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So the, the vacant land shouldn't even be included in the evaluation.
Paul, I'll let you.
Yeah, and I mean, vacant land, it makes up a big part of the valuation. It's, it's market driven. Uh, and it's, it's going to play into the overall valuation that we put on profit. She said vacant land's bought and it's built on. Well, no, I'm just saying. At some point, it's usually bought with the intention of a, and.
Crystal ball.
Yeah. Good question.
So if you go south and there's ninety acres that's for sale. If you looked into the price, you want that ninety acres of selling for acre.
That are for sale for a long time.
Yeah, when you. Some forty-five thousand dollars an acre.
I don't know, Paul, have you looked at that? I, I don't know what that land was going for. I don't know what they were asking.
Yeah.
Assets are assets. So if it sells for forty-five thousand an acre, what's that going to do with my three acres that I'm sitting?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say. I, I, I obviously don't know the area we're talking about, but it's quite acreage land right now and it's. It's going to be switched. So right now it's probably valued at, as I said.
So. How do I get my place, my two acres that I farm in the game? Because then I go out.
Love to have mine, yeah, mine's switched eight minutes too, but, yeah.
But.
It should be planted across the world. Doesn't matter what you use it for.
Yeah, once it's, uh, it's just kind of a function of how it works. Once it's sold, it's planted and zoned differently outside of age. Improvements are in place.
Okay, so you only look at it though, other than age, once it's planted and zoned differently.
Yeah, once, once it's planted, zone goes through the typical development process of the city, you start seeing some vacant land sales. That's true. That's where you start to analyze that more detail. Start saying, all right, industrial park plants go on three fifty acres or whatever. Um, we start to calibrate our system model based off of this. Same thing if like, how creeks start selling lots for. Or I'm sorry, I don't know, forty thousand dollars can be a pretty good indicator of where values.
Okay. Any other questions, anybody? Yeah. What do you guys want to do?
If I could, uh, just to help. I guess I'm not pointing you to whatever you need to do, but just to make sure that, um. If the council wish, wishes to have those adjustments in place, I presented. Um, the motion that I put together is to improve the adjusted assessment rule, except for those parcels potential review. Maybe five I had on there as well as, uh, uh, council member needs.
Yep, I don't know if there's anybody here that's not on that list. If they want to have a conversation with Paul, probably be tonight, then.
We'll get that on the record.
Martin, moment.
Okay, let him get those written down then, so we can make sure that you guys are represented with him.
He's a.
Yeah.
John, but I sent an exchange of emails with Noel Middinger, so I assume to know I'm on the list or in. Yeah, he's listed as.
Yeah, I think you're on here, John. There's somebody else? Who speaks, say your name so I don't. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else? Yeah, okay. Go ahead.
And, and make sure it's aware of it right now. Tonight's the last night to do it, so that's, make sure your name is on that list.
Yep, before Paul leaves. Barton, yes.
Oh, that's a, that is a good question. It was, it was, it was the area.
The whole, the area as well.
Yeah, that whole area used to make.
Hold on, it's better, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else need to get on Paul's roster tonight? Who's already on there, okay? Any other questions? Concerns? I know there's concerns, but how about questions? Okay, so what do you guys think? What do you want to do? So. Uh, Paul, what would happen if we made a motion to bring it down or look at it, look at a ninety percent?
No, I, I, well, hey, ninety percent. That's going to be hard, but if there's like a percent number that you can think in your head. Yeah, maybe like if you were to say. You do solve, build, if you were to say you solve residential, are you thinking like commercial too, you want to draw? Residential, like where you want to draw a line?
Yeah, I know, that's the thing, because that's when we start doing that, that's what's going to happen. We're going to have to start getting. Yep.
Yeah, if, if we're going to make a recommendation, easiest one to push forward, like. From a computer standpoint, we would model our system, which is to be to say, uh, like. Like a four percent. Reduction of building and improvement value is leave everything else alone.
And then hope to heck that the history doesn't continue, because what if it does, then?
I understood.
Yeah, because that, that is the other side. I, I, we don't know what will happen, um. But again, I would, I would encourage though, if it is the recommendation you're ma- making, just to spell that out in your minutes. Why you made that recommendation, why you feel that way and, you know, open table at the county too.
Yeah.
I'm not going to be offended by you guys at the board making a recommendation. That's, that's. It's up to you to do that.
But I understand we're going to get. But I understand we're gonna get quizzed because everybody else has pretty much.
That's how I envision some of the, just trying to forecast some of the questions that might happen.
And I understand that, because we'll be the odd couple out coming in there. I'm not gonna wanna know the why.
Yeah.
It is.
We've identified extraordinary circumstances. Identified economic hardship, we've identified some, um. I don't know how to word it. Yeah, but a a methodology, some questions in the methodology with some of the, um, you know. Larger tracts of open land, we'll call it. What else would be out?
No, I mean, I think.
I think these were probably, uh, these are our reasons right now to what we discussed today.
We've, we've gotten a lot of. And and it's from residents, neighbors, everyone else in our city, like we're explaining, has just experienced astronomical. And we're trying to figure out how we can be as fair as we can be while still maintaining. The proper requirements with the state and not undermining anything and putting those on balance and be well.
Maybe if you, if you were to make a recommendation like that, obviously, um. If you were to come to the county, maybe the state where you're trying to do what the city to try and get it so you're. Sales, uh, you're trying to separate. As an individual city. Um, so you can do it independently. And I think things like that, I.
Would that help us or hurt us?
I I don't know. I don't know.
Astronomical growth does the rest of the county balance us is the, you know, one place. It's just like I was advocating.
Right? I agree.
I question if that's gonna help us or hurt us in the long.
And it could hurt.
Well, I'm glad for once I'm on this side and that that's.
Right, I, but but I mean, we have to weigh that and everyone in here is, you know, everyone has questions about taxes and they have concerns and whatnot. But as council, we have to make a decision. What's best for the city and today it might be best for us to say, ah, we're gonna do this independently. But as the commercial comes and you know it's coming, and as the additional growth comes our way, is that gonna, are we gonna shoot ourselves? And put ourselves in a worse position than we would have been if we would have just equalized across the board.
For future reference. Is all of this in Excel spreadsheet or? We got a, we got a PDF file, which makes it. Very difficult is the word I will use to review.
Yeah, you see, you'd like the each parcel individually and in Excel.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah, unfortunately, I'll see what I can do. We did the way any our vendor. Reports it, Excel formatting. For whatever reason, it doesn't work great, but I'll, I'll send you what we have.
Understood.
All right, thoughts? Naomi, what do you think?
I echo all of the comments here. I've, um, that you, you guys already know how I feel about this.
Well, there's no. There is nothing good here that we, you know, it's just no matter what we do, it's. We're probably, we have to. It is, we do, we have to, we're gonna have to make one. We also have to realize that the decisions that we make this year might. Hurt us next year a little bit, because if we do continue to have what we're having, or we're gonna compound this issue if we do decrease it. Not that I don't say we shouldn't consider it, but I'm just saying we have to realize there's some consequences to this if we have a continued pattern like we have. We may not, but if we do, that's just something to consider. What do we do next year then?
Understood, and I I look at it as, okay. Can't predict the future, but if something does happen, it does take a while. To try to undo what you've done. And is it easier to try to do a bigger step if all of a sudden interest rates go back down, the economy comes back and everybody's happy again? Or? Do you try to play it safe for this year? They're already proposed across the board for dwellings. I think is probably what you were calling it. I'm not looking to raise anybody's, but percentage wise, across the board. Do something that is something more reasonable.
I mean, Paul, you didn't have anybody lower than your ninety.
I don't wanna raise anybody's, what I'm getting at. Did you lower any?
Ah, I'd have to go back for a second.
Which is why I was asking for that Excel spreadsheet, because.
Yeah, there might have been some sales review where a couple were lowered. I imagine it would only been. Sales review, that's all would have been over to this market. Like I said, on average, most houses saw four and a half to five. Or to six and a half percent increase. With systems monitoring, break off those outliers that we discussed a few times, uh. That's the range you're looking at. That's. That's where we build based off that gets you tolerating suit the rest.
I I just don't wanna increase somebody. Not not knowing is, which is why I asked for that Excel spreadsheet. I wanted to be able to sort and just go, okay. I'm gonna hurt this person if I do X, Y, or Z.
Positive in all of this, the, the. The properties that are in question were caught. There is going to be a correction made, which is a huge positive. I'm choking a little bit myself on taking any type of a massive reduction on a small one I'm open to. Because I don't want to hurt people if I'm on. And I know it's coming in the city. And I'm fearful that if we do much more than that, that it's.
It'll hurt us next year.
It'll hurt us. I can't in good faith do that, but I can recognize if there's a, an error or something's been overlooked or something's been. Needs to be reevaluated. I think that this is very fair, especially the ones pending review. I think we need to take a look at. Being able to make a recommendation, the Paul can go off on some to make and argue for my, their office list. And if we don't necessarily want to get the ninety-four, ninety-five, but ninety's a little. Much, and how much are we talking here? You know, go right in the middle.
Say two and a half?
Yeah.
Two percent?
Two and a half, three percent.
I I mean, across seven hundred and some billion dollars evaluations. Right? I I mean, it doesn't even make sense. Is it gonna be enough to make a difference?
I don't wanna play devil's advocate completely here, but another thing to look at too is, I mean, the list of the adjustments we made. Particularly the houses we were inside of, it's not worth the replacement. So it might have been estimated originally. We got fresh eyes on it. We updated the property record card. A lot of the people feeling, the nineteen people that called me, the three, the like four actually we had. Could have been something as easy as a data correction. Um, the other fifteen hundred that got the notices. I'm not saying they're all right with their value, but they. Might be understanding notes in the market.
And even the people that are, didn't get the letters, I can, back to my point. I mean, I I still think. Um, an increase under nine percent. Under ten percent not triggering a notification is. Is is substantial.
And that's definitely a legis, it's a legislative process.
Yeah, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm just saving for saving the conversation. Yeah. I heard like.
All getting notified. Has been because they've been notified in August. Because there's a three, kind of like a three step notice, okay, mostly increased than the August statement.
Yeah, yeah.
You had a question? Yeah, go ahead.
Few years ago, the tax assessor showed up on the doorstep at eight o'clock in the morning, Saturday morning. Having never been in a property that's what we built. I invited him in. Like that, she went down. Because the way he explained it was the way assessed by. Thinking you all got granite countertops and marble for a hundred years ago.
I know I once had a thing, say I had a.
No upgrades. No permits for. But yet there.
And he said, we were one of the first ones to let him in the house that a lot of people would not let in their house.
And I've heard that too.
I I so heard that Paul said that you were kidding.
Right.
That that needs to be.
Then again, yeah, I guarantee none of my staff saw it on a Saturday, but.
Oh, this was, uh.
Probably during the initial.
You guys hired, um, Vanguard, I believe.
Yeah, that was.
And and mine, mine was at eight o'clock in the morning too.
That reasonable to you, Chad, Aaron? I don't, the fact that you got pending review, they're gonna sit right, go through and make sure everything's right.
Yeah. Absolutely, but I want to make it fair across the board for all our neighbors, you know. If if somebody wasn't aware of this or didn't know, you know, how to do process. I wanna make sure that. We're not just the only one.
Right, and and that's why we're not recommending like just individuals in neighborhood.
Uh, uh, on full area adjustment.
Okay, I have a question. If if we were equalized to we did two thousand nineteen. Everybody. And why do certain neighbors have to be pulled out and revalued right now? Yeah, if we ever, if everything was set in stone in two thousand nineteen. And everything was equal, and maybe the four percent or five or six, whatever it is, should be cross the board for everyone throughout. That that city.
Well, I think.
That's just not sensible to me, but maybe I'm.
So a lot of it was land, larger, larger tracts of of land and to Paul's defense, there will. I believe last year your comments were, how do you get a proper value on a larger? Lot, because it's such a hard target to hit. I I agree, it is. Um, and obviously I'll let you answer the question for that, for that gentleman, but. Yeah, this, this year. Like I said, my comment was. Mostly. The three pieces of property on our street that went up for sale or sold. And no building has actually been built on any of those yet. How can you really take how or much somebody paid for that piece of property as gold when? The list of the larger developers have yet to touch any of those lots and go, no, that's way too rich for my blood. So.
Well, yeah, so again with that, it was just like, like you said, just kind of some of the, the vacant land review and a think after. Or deeper analysis, we just kind of wanted to hold, hold back and actually see. Some physical listings. Well, we don't wanna see anybody sell there else in the area, but it'd be nice to have an actual sale of a house. In that area before we kind of move targeted.
If you make a good buy since property ten years ago or five or fifteen years ago, tends a bigger piece of property and. Play it's worth more now, so I'm, I'm being analyzed because I did something. That was, uh, maybe as a force I do it. Yeah, I used to be so on end and now you're on, yeah. It's working more, we're gonna attack them and tell. Yes, to separate in the fell.
I agree with what you're saying. That's one of the most frustrating things being property, wondering if anything, you're paying almost on their life games asset.
Right. Arlene, you had a question?
Well, more of a statement, uh, I do wanna kind of prevent what happened to me, to others from in two thousand nineteen. My property doubled in value about three hundred thousand percent, a three hundred thousand dollar gain. That was a hard build as well. So I just caution on holding back and all of a sudden a year or two years now I get whacked again like that, because it's easier to just a smaller amount. Than a big one. And in regards to the economy, now it's not worse, but I do an extensive study today of the North Fargo, two hundred fifty-five thousand dollar home. And coming out of the winter, it was two hundred fifty-five. Now I'd seen a seasonal adjustment. That same house is selling for two eighty.
A little adjustment now?
Yeah.
There's still snow on the ground.
There, there, the house, it's ridiculous on how much that one, the house that I ran. Were that big of a difference. So if you were bought it last year, you were about two fifty-five, now it's about two seventy-five, thirty.
So the market is this volatile right now?
There, there's not many houses on the market, so you have a low supply, big demand.
So here we go again.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
These are tough decisions, man. It's why we sit here, guys, and make these decisions.
All right, what do you guys want to do? You wanna drop it a couple? But where it is? Off, do something.
Right, I have a question. I advise, I'm being reevaluated, our neighbors sell their house, really, to the model. Right?
Yep.
Here's what happened, okay. Right, so here's what happened prior to twenty nineteen, being there had been no real big evaluations throughout the city. You'd have two houses side by side, one could be, uh, taxed at four hundred thousand dollars and the one right next to it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. They're about the same looking house. And that went on all over town here. We saw that on the sheet that there's just one right next to the other. Well, that wasn't fair at all, so then we tried to go through this process and at least level it out a little bit. But you're, you're right. I mean, the market forces generate that. And that's what's gonna happen when you get these type of crazy sales, like what Ireland was talking about. You go to two eighty-five. Well, and I agree, and I think, right. You know, some people won't let them in either, and I mean, that's something that we ran into. With the Vanguard guys, when they were going around town. Yep. Don't disagree with you. That that's what should happen is that there should be appointments scheduled, and I'm, I would be an advocate for that. If we ever get to that situation again, because I, I believe too, they were just going around knocking on doors. Yeah, and some people aren't gonna let them in. I get it. But that's where some of the stuff ran into. They were just looking at the outside of the house and had to make an assumption. And you're right, the granite, whatever. I mean, I don't know if they went quite that nuts, but they gotta make some assess, some idea. And the assumption was a lot of times that your basement was finished. That wasn't always the case. But that's gonna kick up the value too. So that's something why. But if they can't get in the place, they don't know. And I, and I know they should have made appointments. I'm not gonna deny that, but. Right?
Understand government and taxes and budgets have to keep going, so then keeps going fine. But for someone who goes three and four to five hundred because, um, someone decided to sell their house, now you're, you're getting hammered for that.
I can argue with you, because I know, like I said, what he was talking about, you got peo- you, you got people that are gonna buy houses and they sit in whatever it was going for. And they go twenty, thirty over. Well, then you're affecting the whole area because of that increase. And to your point. Yeah.
That's the policy so that maybe other ones where they're at. If then they're presenting.
Then we start getting into this uneven thing that we ran into.
Really wanna use bad word right now, say, that's too bad for the dumbass that gave. I mean.
Not gonna argue. Right, I get it, but it still gets into that equalization thing that we've been ran into up until twenty nineteen.
Reason that this is to try to. Level things out instead of having the as close. Cause I, I agree, I mean, I.
I know.
If you judge on it as an office, we'd actually consider that sale, because if our data is incorrect, so if it was personally re modeled, they're also, we didn't know it. Sold, we throw that sale. Because we're not comparing how the staff was really. Incorrect data. To a market sale, so we wouldn't even use that. Those ones are renewed.
Yeah, Eric.
So I've seen the MLS listing that they were comparing that, that area to.
Obviously, I guess those are actual sales.
Those are actuals?
Those are actuals, so those are ones in the market that those are our, from our data.
Sealease? Right, they're still living in. I realized they bought a lot over here on. River's Edge, they haven't built yet. I'm not, I can't answer that question, I'm brutally honest.
I'm glad you've seen that MLS listing, because I'd like to get your viewpoint as well as a city council member.
So it. I realize they probably have a hard time trying to find apples, apples as far as like listings to.
I can only have potential.
I, just because. How do you find it? I mean, I, I can't imagine. There are that many houses that have actually sold. I mean, yes, right now it sounds like you're using stuff that's on the market that is still for sale, uh, to try to get a gauge on that. Um. If. If I were to try to make a recommendation for the people that are on the fixed incomes that can't afford this, um, at the state level. If if the state were to keep track of. How much the assessed value should have increased and how much taxes the county has lost. Keep track of that for somebody that has to apply at the county level to get some sort of relief. And then when their property finally does sell, you recoup that cost. So that it is fair at the time of sale that, you know, you're gonna go back and actually get the value that you lost, but you're not kicking. Some poor person out of their house due to no fault of their own. Because right now, I mean, I, I think we all realize here, there's. Because right now, I mean, I, I think we all realize here, there's, there are people that are probably getting pushed out of their homes. And how do you make it fair for them? And I realize you can't answer that, that's not at your level, it is at a state level, fully understanding of that, but how do we raise that awareness? Do you understand what I mean?
Yep, and absolutely, this legislative session, with it, all I can say is reach out to your local legislators, for the few years.
Well, I know they were working on that Homestead Credit thing, and I think that all went.
Credit still, there's that bill still out there.
Is it still there?
Just worked on, it's kind of going through transitions.
So they started watering it down to the point where it was going to be useless again, from where it started, and I've been advocating for them. Yeah.
He can talk. One voice, one voice, one voice, I start adding all new in, and guess what?
They'll listen, you got to call them, you got to let them know, they'll listen, but.
Really, we can only facilitate the traction we get.
Yeah.
That, that's why I said I'm not mad at you.
Oh, I don't, I know, I totally understand. Mad at the message, not the messenger. All questions, yeah, one completely land value, I think I noticed, I have curbing that. I'm slightly under acre, selling about two hundred and four thousand. Uh, there's other property listing boards that have, it's like turning city limits, like one of them six acres. Yet their, their land values the same as mine, when I. All the land value. Yeah, and again, we try, we have vacant land sales, try to use that, obviously on. But we really do try to analyze what's the market telling us. Is it, if, if we have our whole system modeled correctly, and same, if you put a same one story house in. Cove Creek and a, the same one story house on one and a half acre tract of land. Um, one in Cove Creek's going perfectly, we're worth fifty thousand more and one on one and a half acres, so probably those means a land adjustment. Up with that, so we try to allocate what's, what's the land, what's the need to be valued at based off those sales.
And another thing, in the, in two thousand nineteen, you did help me, and I appreciate it, I remember calling, I'm tired of it. And the thought it was like a Thursday, oh, probably Monday, calling up, and said, and I couldn't sleep. So I drove up over the weekend because of your development, so just like country acres where there was adjustment. They came through and adjusted everybody in my developments as well, because of all the calculations.
Any other questions? Look for some options here.
Well, I would like to see us maybe consider at least a small reduction as we discuss. Um, I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, I, I recognize the difficult situation and concerns of the future, but. That would be, I'd like to consider that.
What percent of them?
And just dwelling or land too?
Dwelling and land. Dwelling and oil land, dwelling and land.
Something in dwelling.
Oh, okay, I mean, I'm open to.
I'm thinking dwelling.
I was thinking dwelling. Um, it's, it's going to be the bigger parcels for the land, and I think he said he was still going to work on that, we'd have to word it correctly. Um, but I just want to make it fair, I don't want to make sure, or I'm trying to make sure I don't raise anybody's up. And like I said, that's how I don't. I don't know what I can say as far as the wording for a emotion, because you don't want to negatively impact somebody like you raised it.
What are your thoughts?
Based on discussion. Struggle. To believe that percentage. On dwelling, and I'm fearful that it will negatively impact people. Next year and the following years. That's my belief, based on all the discussion we've had. That was discussion. Your face was a really different position here. I think we've better served getting in touch with our developers, like we're supporting through the state board and changing the. Really looking at what we're going to do as we promote the city, just like what was part of our done. Instead of. People are, they thought. What's over two percent going to do on a dwelling, the land is the issue for the majority of people here. It's the change in the land, so making an adjustment to the dwelling, I don't believe personally is going to be enough of an adjustment. Justifying the. Explanation that's going to be needed at the kinds of levels. And at that, I still think that I can say one or two percent of what is at work. I think we're better served really putting some resources into changing where we're going as the city grows.
All I was just going to say, I, you know, I said it on quite a few of these meetings analysis, and uh. Tonight was probably the more robust meeting that we've had, where we've had quite a bit of conversation, I appreciate the audience having the. Back and forth too, because that's something that we need to hear so we can make judgments on this. You may not agree with all the, you know, you know, what we land on here, but understand that we've had conversation about it, and we are trying to come up with. An equitable deal here if we can, so again, I appreciate all the conversation that we've had this evening as well. Yep.
I mean, I struggle because I too don't want things to be harder the next time for people. Um, but, like you said, it's like. It's not sustainable, like every, every single year, it's just, it's always going to go up, that's the model. You're never, ever just going to be like, oh, you know, unless there's like serious drastic, which, how often have you seen that?
Two thousand eight?
Two thousand eight, it's the only time I saw a planning, but again, um, working in West Fargo, which was. Going through exactly what you guys are right now, in a way, everything is starting to seem like.
I mean, the residents that I talk to are hurting because. It's become expensive. And I almost have to chuckle because I had a resident say to me. Ever heard of that Klaus Schwab guy? And I was like, hmm, I've probably seen something. And they said that, oh, there's this video of him saying, you will own nothing and you will like it. You know, it's like, eventually you're going to get, you're not going to be able to afford your home anyways, and so. I just have to chuckle because that's how people are feeling, and it's really sad, and it's really unfortunate, and. Um, I feel like I just don't, I, I'm, I don't know how to, I don't right now.
We have to change it on a level.
And also recognize our control as the council and with the other taxing entities to commiserately, uh, adjust the mill rate. To, uh, yeah, to, to take some of the burden off of the constantly increasing. Um, because we can absolutely do that.
I mean, I think maybe we. Um, in my opinion, maybe a couple percentage points isn't going to really help if we're doing just dwellings. And if that's the case, then yeah, Stephanie, then let's, let's look at our budget, let's try to figure out what we can do, I, I don't know.
As soon as we can lower the budget, there, or lower the mills.
That would be in. Oh, July, August.
July, August, I agree.
Yeah. October's when they sign off on the budget.
Because if we're not, if you guys aren't, well, if you guys aren't wanting to lower the land and you're just doing dwellings. Like Sarah said, a lot of these people are because of their land. Um. I don't know, what do you, does that make sense?
It does.
I mean, and I don't want to like deter, I don't want to change people's minds just because of my own. I just, I'm just thinking, Sarah's right, what, what kind of impact is a couple percentage points going to make? Probably not a whole lot.
Totally agree, and, and we're not the largest taxing entity, though, it's, you've got the school, you've got the county.
Exactly.
How do you get everybody on board to lower it, you know, I mean, especially if they're going to build or remodel a school here. Build another school in the next couple of years, because this one's already going to be all grown by the time.
We don't have any influence over what they do, it's just us, just realize that.
Yes.
So I mean.
But as residents, we do to have maybe a greater voice.
Um, I mean, I think that we can be frivolous and fiscally irresponsible by. Trying to figure out our budget and making sure we're looking at line items and, um, trying to help the residents, because. Um, you know, I, I stand by my vote, when I voted to get rid of the tax abatement. I meant, I meant every word of using those tax dollars so that we can lower our mills. And if that's what we're going to have to do, then that's what I want to look at. That's, that's, that's that, that's what I'm, that's how I feel.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so what do you guys want to do? He's got to make a motion on something.
What, whatever the motion is, I would like to include the changes in land values for that certain end of town. Other words, um.
Value as recommended.
As presented.
By the county accepting the adjustments that are currently in process. And the adjustments as listed here, meaning the additional stuff added.
Sounds good, sounds like you just made a motion, so try it against that.
You want to take the words out of my mouth, go ahead.
There you go.
Uh, Brent, did you get all that? Yeah.
Did I miss any?
Yeah, Paul, is it, what, does that encompass what we're?
Yeah, that's pretty, I guess the one I had written out was approve the adjusted assessment, which we include all those adjustments we discussed. And accept those parcels pending review, now give us time to work with the people that appealed today, that are still, or anybody still tending on that list.
Right.
Between now and the coming.
And includes everybody that was, that contacted you this evening, so, okay. All right, so Sarah makes a motion. Uh, can I get a second on that? Okay, maybe just a second. All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay, that's everybody, so motion carries. All right. Yep. Paul, thanks again for coming out.
Thank you, Paul.
And, and from a, uh, tax down, you guys are a lot more, um, your tax rate.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So does everybody here that needs to get ahold, do you get a phone number to you, or are you going to? Yep. Yep, you guys can do that. Mike, I'm sorry I didn't recognize you back there, so, my fault, sorry. All right. So with that, we will move along to the sixty fourth Avenue Roundabout, Jim. Start with you. Yo. Oh, oh, yeah, sure, I'm sorry, I've. Got it, yep, I'm sorry, go ahead. Now, in our defense, you were kind of a silhouette back there, so I kind of, you know.
On interesting thing, I like to find out, I noticed medical system. Feel that just shows another value that we offer. Everybody on patrols, uh, what's called EMR, emergency medical responders, basically what that is, we have the same training. Your ELS, ambulance, especially like carrier, some of the smaller. It's a great service that our office provides, I would say ninety percent of the time, we're, we're not seeing, we're unable to start providing that type of care. Other than that, um, I didn't see anything, no, well, worried or anything that I thought was of concern. Going through the numbers and looking at us. If anybody had any specific questions about any, or be concerned that, let me hear, so that's just the breakdown again. Those are of what types of calls generated reports, so not all calls generated report. When you generate a report, or it shows up here, would be ones where there's charges requested. Or the information report, kind of the tracking trap stuff for you.
If you, uh, I know I was looking at this graph here too. See if it's some, some fun up in Lost River area, kind of back and forth in there, and on wall, I'm assuming some of that is just speeders.
So another new thing to our offices started, and it's, I think it's going to skew the numbers a little bit. Is to help track our time in communities more, my sheriff was asked that we start a COP anytime we enter a city. Community oriented leasing, and a lot of the guys are just moving to fire hall location.
That's the, the red zone. Yeah.
That's generating, so I, I came down here, I'll create one, I'll be, if I come back tonight, I'll create another one.
Yeah, that's, that was what I was going to ask you about, where that, some of that came from, so, okay, that makes sense.
But. To give us credit for our time, we're spending in the communities, not just our contracted community, but other communities. Realistically, it is what we're doing, and we're in the communities, we're going community, we're into the city, we're stopping, we're talking citizens, we're. Even off the ice, very intense in the summer, but it's, it really is, that's the definition of community oriented leasing, I think. So it's just about taking credit, giving credit.
Right. So about the only thing I was going to ask about was on seventeen there, I know the bottom one, I know the top one, the middle one, it's in the red zone. What, where is that location, or where's that situated with? Yeah, right there, yeah.
Is that the church?
Yeah, I mean, I know you guys sitting a lot at the church, I just wasn't sure if that was it.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I don't.
I think it's north of the church, because I think that's a cemetery right there, isn't it, the, the gray or the tan area? But that's a school, okay, Casey's, okay, so it's north of there.
So that could be the school.
Yeah, there you guys are running into the grove for coffee, I don't know, maybe that makes sense.
And again, that would create a call.
Yeah, okay, I get it. Okay. And that's what I was just curious about, just because I saw that on there, and I was just like, okay, that's a little more of a hotspot, so, okay.
And, uh. You had a call, I had a call the other night here over at the bar, we stopped, they called us first thing in. You had a great talk with them, we had a long, great one, we're. They feel comfortable calling us, which I think is wonderful, that's what we're, we're born. So, yeah, I have any other issues, I guess I have any other issues personally with anybody there, they did. They did the exact thing they were supposed to do, somebody drank too much, they said they're not. I mean, they're doing their job, but they're not what they're supposed to do, that was great to see. It was a good conversation. Getting one home, and that was the nice thing too.
Yeah, everybody walked away.
Everybody got a safe ride home. That's also going to be my.
Yep. Okay, anybody got any questions?
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick notes, basically with the flooding coming up. I'll make sure it's safe with that, for driving through flooded roads.
Yep.
Might not be able to see, but we get a lot of watchouts underneath that, while we're throwing across roads. The other thing too, I know they put it out on our Facebook page, it was about money, that's another huge issue we have with the dump, it rose especially. It is a be misdemeanorous damage to highway, is what it's called, and you can be held criminally and then simply liable to. I'm sure to request restitution, I think they, if I remember in years past, it's something like. Hundred fifty dollars an hour, and then six hours recharge. Could add up in a hurry.
Yeah.
Over that you think I am.
Okay. That would be nice, so it becomes a non-event per se, so. Okay, appreciate it, thank you. Yep. Okay, Jim, now you've had a chance to review your notes, go.
Part of that project, streetlights are being installed along the Conover Seventeen corridor of the Fifty Second Avenue. And Fifty Seventh Street, and that's the wall wire will be grappled between seventy-six and sixty-fourth avenues as the detour route. To all people who live in this though addition. Uh, the streetlight improvements consist of concrete bases, interduct, ocean box, inductors, eight eight poles, and even there's. Uh, Fifty Seventh Street, veteran Boulevard improvements, this is a subway preparation. Um, an area service course, plus thirteen. County is looking for a cost share with the city on those items. There is a percentage on the middle that I give anyone on the far right column, where I highlighted the items that. You see, those are the items, so it works out to city be responsible for about eighty-five percent of the detour route, those two items. Then varies from fifty-eight percent to a hundred percent of the. Electrical items, this is a continuation of lighting that hundred seventeen corridor all the way through the second avenue, following down the. Horace, our project has been along that corridor, that there's been a potential to light it, he's taken an opportunity to light it. Like so, estimated cost share. Uh, the estimated total cost for the cost share is three hundred and twenty-two thousand nineteen dollars, thirty-five cents. So breakdown is attached. Task there, um, there is a cost share agreement that the city attorney and office have been reviewing. The future made as far as changes, well, it will be part of system, wanting to approve that cost share, and once we get that done, we can. Get it to the county, and then they can approve it at their level as well.
Can you remind me, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say, Lucas did your, you go ahead now.
They clean up some of the improvements, what actually, make sure the city is covering what it needs covered, county covers.
I might, so.
I'm gonna jump in, just because I'm thinking. This came up as a city issue, because someone works, has to move snow all the way up that corridor. And we have deer, a huge deer problem down by the river. And so, with this, there was an opportunity for a share with the county instead of the city caring. And I don't know if that.
Actually, that was a big question, but, and I don't remember, I might be thinking of a different project. But was there also talk of additional cost share with other entities on this project, like the city of Fargo?
Fifty-seven, that's a budget forward, is half, half, half is in the city of Horace, half is in the city of Fargo.
That was my thought. So that can still be a, a conversation after that.
There'll be another, it will be put down.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that was a question.
So, yes, we get the one done, probably then we'll reach out.
And then if I re, if I recall correctly, the, the funds that Horace ends up expending on this process, um. Is not gonna be special assessed out to residents, there were, there were funds.
Our intentions are. Three point one million sales tax, there's our current balance.
Okay.
In mind, we'll have other project costs. Wall, or sixty-six, and where those are bigger projects. Yeah, so cost share tied to those, but. It'll keep it simple, we just keep.
Thank you.
You know. He brings up a really good point, and it's, it's just because on one time, the last discussion. We were talking about how we can help our residents. This is a direct way for us to help people, instead of them shouldering additional burden with. Special assessments and things like that, when the city had put down twenty-five percent on. Say, the chestnut iron, but the object, which I sat in on. That might be in that way of us. Trying to give you things up for like, the votes just aside.
Well, definitely helps.
Let's explore that.
That's where the sales tax fund comes in, so the more money we get in the sales tax too, the more of the stuff we can do and not burden. The residents, so that's part of the deal. Um, okay, Jim, anything else? Lucas, anything else? You guys have any?
One side of the light at all, I don't think they're staggered, but they might be staggered.
This is a county project, this isn't a city project, so they'd have, they'll have to talk to the county. Our part in this tale is to basically get a temporary road put together. Um, and then we're gonna pay for the lighting, pay for lighting, but how would they get dispensed or put up, that's the counties.
So were you the on the criteria of last Monday night by the county? They had a public meeting last Monday night.
Are you in my part, or so I'm kind of wondering why I wasn't?
Sure, yeah, I don't know, I can get you the information. They did that.
Yeah, I would like to.
Okay. You guys wanna, somebody wanna make a motion?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, yep. Jim, you're making a note for.
Thank you, Aaron.
City was not.
Unfold colony, but we do need to roll in.
Yeah.
And you, you were at that meeting, you said?
I was, and I asked.
Okay, but do, do you made that comment, though, that it had to be, okay? Yeah, let's just reiterate that for sure.
Jim, probably just sending an email to Jason Benson, yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Okay. Alright, so what do we, we wanna do here in the cost share? Yeah.
None for me.
No, okay.
For a motion.
I'll share.
Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye. Okay, so everybody's motion carries. Alright. Sewer ordinance, Lucas, you got that one?
Yes. Mr. Mayor members of the council, uh, at your last meeting, we did the first reading of the. Senator's search after ordinance amendment, uh, and to come to request the revision. To incorporate, uh, our past public health variance section. So that was, um, added in addition to, um, we've talked about the. Requirement that, um, within two years after the data official notice, like someone has to connect the third, just put, uh. Those people have to connect public sort of according to a part of pass public health regulations. So, those are the, the only changes from the first read, the second reading. Right, yeah, as you can see right there.
Thank you, thank you for making the changes.
And then nine oh one oh four five has the same chance to take on that too here. Those are the changes. So tonight's motion is to approve the second reading of the ordinance.
I will make the motion to approve the second reading of the sewer ordinance.
Okay, Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second? Go ahead. No.
So no one's, no one's required, say not requiring anyone to connect to public sewer. Um, but they say under, under the administrative code and target past public health regulations. Will require people to connect to public sewer. Uh, if your tank fails, or if you need a new tank, and your property line is within two hundred feet of a public sewer. And that public sewer has the capacity to handle that connection, so they just won't issue a permit to repair or replace. It's not planned here.
I don't know when, but not, not during this conversation, anyway.
We had a nice robust conversation about the sewer ordinance, uh, either the last meeting or the meeting before. Um, and. That might be worth a, a listen, if, if you're interested in it or whatever, but I also wanna add that we have added. Per my request, the variance language that Fargo Cast Public Health also would require in a situation such as yours. Where a person could petition, if that situation were to come up, in their opinion, and undue hardship may result. From a strict compliance, and that the strict application would be unreasonable and practical or not feasible to a homeowner. So. Um, it rests with Fargo Cast Public Health, but there are also considerations that they would take if something were to occur. With a private subject. Yep. Yep.
Yep.
Absolutely, yep.
Alright, so Naomi's made a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second. Thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Alright, next one, Jim.
The city received bids from three contractors, all finished, Dakota Underground and KPH. They're mentally, with a fit table relation attached to that. Uh, the whole bidder was Dakota Underground in Fargo with a bid of three billion, there is an olive name, there is seventy-three dollars and seventy-one cents. Uh, Dakota Underground has provided information for review in accordance with the responsible bidder policy of the city of Horace. And determined to be a responsible bidder and representing the award of a contract, construction contract, we can quote on his own, a three million, there's seven. Thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, seventy-one cents. So, uh, the bids did vary, the engineering estimate was three million. Three million one hundred and forty-six thousand one hundred ninety dollars and fifty cents. Total was two hundred dollars over that, and the high bid was that, well, finish up. Roughly three point nine five, and then KPH was three point four, so. Of the three bids we got, three point three, three point four, three point nine, so. This is a data schedule, shows Dakota Underground starting W right after the Fourth of July. Into September.
So they can't get there any earlier than that. Okay.
Well, say they couldn't get there early.
So it's pretty close to the engineering estimate, two hundred thousand dollars isn't too bad, but. Wonder why that one was so high, was there any other?
Uh, there's some. That's why I said they're really interested, I did some research.
Alright. You guys wanna do? Joe. Stephanie.
Um. I didn't get a chance to review this before the meeting, just, it just came out a few hours ago to us.
Okay, Naomi, you're reading? Okay.
Mobilization is quite a bit higher for Dakota Underground, even though they came in as the little bidder. Understood.
Just the way that they chose to approach it, and the way that.
Understood. Yeah, I have more.
Jim, was there any discussion, like, oh, say, so, end of day type stuff, when we have the heavier, bigger equipment out there? Where are they gonna park their equipment in the evening? Okay.
And they only have them scheduled.
Right, that's, I just was curious. Cause I'm just thinking for, you know, in and out of there too, just for the locals and everything like that. No, I got it, yeah. Oh, I get it. Yep. Yeah.
And those are just obvious things that will happen with the project.
There's a discussion.
Good communication.
Yeah.
Good, okay.
We did the water replacement over here.
Okay.
Okay, pretty done reading, questions for Jim? Anything else on this one? Yeah, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept that underground is a little bitter and to show on the road.
Make that motion.
Okay. Jeff makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second, alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, it's everybody, motion carries. Alright, Jim, you got the next one here too.
Back and forth on this project. But I believe most of the items have been ironed out, what we're asking for, we'd be just a. Proven contingent upon, um, agreement, we have a master deal, we're not a master, but a memorandum of understanding for some of our city of Fargo, and all plans that have been approved. Going with them, they already seen it, the trees have seen it, it's just a matter of fact of them. And then, um, the amendments, the developers' agreement, adding that no building permits will be issued until a call over long terms at the. And then we're acknowledging that the. They've acknowledged with the contractor that they were coordinating cooperating with the county's contractor, but this is right in line with that. Over, bridge replacement with the box covered, so. There is some provisions and specs about that, but relatively vague at this point. Uh, and the contractor will have to maintain access to river or lake, actually where she been at all times, and it's back to the fire site. This is getting into those, getting into those areas, so. Uh, there was, our schedule would be over this at the end of May, considering the award in the first part of June. The project completion is provided by the developer, and they're recommending a June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four completion. But within that, there are three sections, there's section A, which would be Deer Creek State's second edition. Section B, which is Deer Creek State's edition. Section C, which is Deer Creek Parkway. So first, section A and section B would be completed by November one, twenty twenty-three. And section C, Deer Creek Parkway would be complete by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So, um, I think we have that one where it's going, because this doesn't get a word, it doesn't even, it doesn't even hold a lot of time to get this work done, so.
Right.
I think that's something we need to bet on a little bit more, of that's like, it was the base of the plans.
The other question that I have is, will the Fifty Second Avenue Bridge work? Impact on access?
So this one?
Yeah.
Cause Deer Creek Parkway, so the way the county is gonna construct their project is. Cause Deer Creek Parkway, the way the county is going to construct their project is Phase One, which is the roundabout.
Yeah.
You can still come from the north down. When that's done, then they're gonna go up to the box. So then you can come up through the roundabout to get to Ashwood, Deer Creek, Washington, and that. We wouldn't have to come through that Deer Creek Parkway.
Okay.
There is a connection between Deer Creek Parkway and Sixty Fourth Avenue as part of the Deer Creek State's second edition.
All right. Any other questions for Jim?
Uh, the box cover is scheduled to be on site first of August.
And that's going to be completed before the third.
So they said on Monday, last Monday night from the Fifty Second Avenue, it's not going to start till next year.
Oh, they moved it back?
Yes.
Well, yeah. If it is, it's the problem of this year into next year because they have limited, they're taking work in it.
Yeah.
And a whole portion of that isn't until next year because same contractor is doing the shut the box cover.
Right.
Roundabout is doing the worst roadwork.
That's why I asked the question. Cause we know, cause we're trying to juggle access here and it's a delicate dance with what we know. Right now, we think you're going to get out, but.
You'll get out the contractor. The contractor will figure that out, but yeah.
They gotta get you out.
It'll be a little bit of a dance. All right, Jim. So what you're looking for is to approve the plans and specs then, right?
At Fargo, an amended developer agreement regarding building permit issuance. And then full work of the developer on the wording for and for contractor, how we can forward it with the county contractor on their.
Yeah. Make sure Brent got all that written down. Yes.
Project panel, this has been on the table for a while.
It's been on the table since two thousand nineteen. Twenty and certain stopped. Added on second edition, added Deer Creek Parkway. So there's been some hurdles. Stormwater has been one that's been kind of picked up and grew, but I think we've got to the point now where anything push open the baseline. In order to get going, Fargo, I wanted something as far as the plans that get them final one is sort of a sooner time.
Right. You have a question?
Yeah, I think one, it moved a lot of the project. We originally going to, is there, is there no policy to do that still?
Yeah.
Work together with the network.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I consider that being part of this, but last bits to tie up. Sure. Because yeah, I believe the base probably would have a better setup for that.
Their last thing then, the, the cover work that we're discussing here, that to get done or restricted permits to be from these. The core of engineer part is, is one thing that the private.
So in order to keep this moving, we decided that we acknowledge that it's not going to be the first thing done. It's going to be done in twenty twenty three or twenty twenty four. It will allow for the added design movement. So that's going to get all that stuff done and not pitch the contract.
Yo, and that makes sense. I think it's more just, is there a possibility we get into a situation where we can't acquire easement? And now the development is largely complete. So we can't issue off, we can't issue permits here because we can't get access to the apartment. Maybe there's time in there to pull the brakes if we find out. You know what I mean?
I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
I don't know how to put that.
Well, I think that is, I mean, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the discussion was that the city was going to look at that. It really doesn't become on my shoulder, but you know, if it's not possible to get that, then I'm not coming up as a result.
Because I'm, yeah, hard resource. So they have, they have issues being able to get a. Yeah, no, the, everything I see, what I see is just, I believe that corporate pipe is where right before we're in box cover, it's sort of that bridge replacement on target seventeen is where they're talking about. And we replace covert pipe with basically concrete pipe. It flows. So corrugated metal plate is replaced with a concrete pipe and go a lot more water through that. The land is, it looks like it's owned by the diversion authority. So indications from what we've had from a diversion authority is that there shouldn't be an issue. Be able to replace that. Well, if there's land that's near south of there, that's something that will pass out.
Well, there's two, one is definitely with the district you're talking about. The second one we're going to know for sure is within the private property laws. We've, we've done the research to find out if that's. Which in the county, as I absolutely know, right there. And it exists, but it's some, some, sometimes like lines for it privately. So it isn't coming upon somebody to get that adjustment or change. What I'm saying is the fault outside of the Deer Creek land. We don't have any pull for that one. Cause I'm worried about moving into the project. Get everything done and give this last little piece of the end and I can do.
I'm sure that.
Yeah, I don't want to put that, I don't want to put that word on.
I'd be looking at Jim on this one here.
You want to nappy too? Actually, that's what I just didn't know if there's any conversation.
From what it looks like, but I'm just going off the cast going AGI. That's right now. It looks like coalers and it comes right away. But we'll have the research.
The beginning of it is.
Yeah.
As it goes to the hospitals.
Yeah.
So we also have to have the conversation, but the other part is that actually doesn't prove their property and prove bringing things that we think is wanted. So maybe there's time to have those discussions or, you know, bits of work and that kind of thing.
Are there expenses that will be incurred to the private? A homeowner that you're.
It's set as not it.
I, I haven't seen somebody decline.
Yeah.
A replacement of a cover. I experienced this public works or administration. Never seen that occur. I'll be there again, but especially if it's not the cost being passed on the.
It should improve their.
Yeah.
But keep in mind, different people have different perceptions. Be. Lucas, let's talk a little bit, I think outside of boxer, is it possible to, in order to keep the project moving because it has had such a slow pace up to this point, is it possible to eliminate those best contingent on the verification of the covered location and whatnot?
Yeah, I think that the conversation.
I think the conversation needs to have some. I don't want to be in an ugly situation. But I do want to keep the ball rolling because I understand that time is of the essence. There are several things. Probably the time of bid, which right now it looks like we'll be advertising say July.
May, I think it is.
I got a couple one in my head. We've had a lot of some, several of these songs.
So June in first part, we have been getting made.
We have time to get. If we want to move forward, we should.
Yeah, you're gonna add that into them, Jim? Okay. So somebody want to read it back or?
I didn't write down first.
All right, fair.
So I'll make a motion to approve the plans and specifications for the Deer Creek State's second edition. I'm sorry. First and second, thank you. Movement District twenty twenty one dash seven. Contingent or the combination of the second covert as discussed. And the condition to sustain the thing is you also have a couple of conditions that were being amended or added to the idea. Thank you.
All right, so Sarah makes a motion. I get a second.
I'll second.
Stephanie does a second. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
Okay, um, next one there, Jim. Yep.
Doubled.
Okay. There makes a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Naomi does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye. All right, motion carries. All right, Jim, what do you got on our good old hookup to Casper?
Pumps wire, install your ball over the winter time, like suspension right there. So moving a lot of open wire, getting things ready to go. Not a lot to report on that one. Some big news in one through the district point twenty seven, which is connection again. Oh, Peter Ball was installed last Wednesday. People were minimal second page of it, yes. This is kind of fun picture.
I thought I was popular because I got a message from Sarah and I got a message from Jim. I was like, oh.
I was with my dog then and I took pictures. I was like, oh my god.
So the ball was installed on Wednesday. The plumbing and the electrical service haven't been brought yet for the meter wall. They're working on connecting the plumbing. And the electrical will be coming eventually. I met with Gas Guy and electric today to try to plan the route. There's been some things have changed since. Two thousand twenty, so just been easy of getting electricity to the, the. So on this picture here, you can see that so what's on the trailer underneath the crane is the meter wall. There's stairs going down into it on the left side of it. Why I, why I drew this picture with it, in the background, you see the tower. So the water from the tower, the gas rail system will come through this meter pole. It transmitted into this tower outside here and it's spread out through the city of Forest. So this is one you use to kind of illustrate what's coming and where it's going. So the exact date of the transition to Casper Row is not going right at this moment, but all the infrastructure will be completed within the next month. I think it was sooner than that, but I put next month on the demo. And then after that, a significant amount of flushing, you know, do this thing line would be required prior to the complete transition to Casper. So when that time does come, we're going to get a lot of notice out to residents. It's going to stir up some water. It's going to stir up some sediment.
Washing the bathtub is going to make minerals and everything with everyone's water and. Everybody needs to know. Do not wash whites out.
Yeah, yeah, it will be a hard, hard flush. But it is in, it is in place. And they were prepping the patches in sixty third street today for concrete, so.
Who's running our Facebook account?
Well, we are just starting to transition that one ourselves.
Yeah, I think it's really important that we like continually talk about that because.
Been an odyssey.
It's gonna, it's gonna get hard for residents, especially in my neighborhood where we already have orange water and it's probably just going to get worse. So I want to make sure that we are absolutely on top of it and making sure that they understand that it, it's going to take some time.
It's going to get worse before it gets better, but it's going to get a lot.
Yeah.
We have talked internally about strong push on a lot of the different projects, something.
Okay. Perfect.
Yeah. Um, next here, Jim, you got the other.
All right. So in order of construction status, if I did, I didn't have it in your bag, and I have a couple. This is the hot off the press twenty twenty three discussion project something. Do you want to pass a little calendar on it? Thank you, Jay. So we won't go through all these. There's, I've got three ledges on here. One is twenty twenty one carryover, twenty twenty carryover. And then twenty twenty three disruptive. Really like to knock that twenty twenty one carryover off. There's two projects on there. Twenty twenty two carryover, you can see that on there. We do have two projects that aren't on, because depending upon when they go and Riverd Edge second. South Hill Farm six, South by South Hill Farm. But this is kind of gives you an idea that there's going to be quite a bit coming on again.
I like this. Nice.
So
Got a question for you. So when did load restrictions come on? Have they come on yet?
Or search us where on is two weeks ago or last one I said, last April. April four.
So if we're seeing trucks drive through the city right now. It better what?
Light, not lower empty.
Well, I mean, you're seeing excavators move through the city and you're also seeing loads of dirt and stuff like that go out to. And do we get actual information on that? Cause I know last year we had quite a gap.
So on permits for overweight vehicles, they are supposed to get a permit with, from the city if it's on city roads.
Yep.
So apparently seventeen, I can't do much there, but they're basically like state streets. They're supposed to get a permit through us. City Hall, they fell permit. Sheriff John Irner and I have been all just probably different contractors that quite often do business in home. Actually, even paid visits to some of them. And that challenges with the board. We do get permits. Some of them have their participation in permits.
Yeah.
If they do get pulled over to their own way, don't have permit. Those fines are pretty hefty. They can be in the thousands of dollars. Yeah, those fines. So it's always a lot cheaper, even though the permits aren't cheap. It's always the best interest to do that. We have talked with truck activity. For the first time that he's in Kindred, but he was by last week. But the summer.
Sounds like I was gonna.
Sheriff John Irner was asking, asking. Be present more often. So, and it makes sense, you know, the deal with the Tony guy, we probably have most concentrated drop traffic.
Yes.
Overweight truck traffic in, in the area, especially when it's not harvest time. It's harvest time, Sam, Brad County, but we're asking them push that coverage, so.
He is in Tom Jet. I've seen him twice.
Anything else, Jim?
Oh, we're just getting started.
Well, I thought I could get you back in the game.
All right. So last Friday, we were opened by North Coast Harbor Transportation on five seventeen derek each time and the center of monkey oil. Didn't get an abstract yet, but the little bidder was off construction of Brandon Forks. The share use bathroom bid was five hundred and twenty-six thousand one hundred seventy dollars and cents. Of that, the city's share would be estimated at eighty-six thousand nine hundred eighty dollars. Pretty good. Pretty good share of that. And then the city's share. Okay. And then the city's share for the center of monkey was thirteen thousand three hundred fifty-nine dollars seventy-two cents. So off construction has done some work at home. It's been, so contractor work have done a good job. What I've seen.
I have no issues.
So we'll wait for, see, there'd be an agreement that comes with the upkeep since these are their projects. And then we'll have it at your next meeting probably be for consideration to it more. So.
We'll get out.
There were two contractors that get off construction on the regular. Our entry estimate was five hundred and forty thousand. And a bid from Otto's five, that was six, one, seven.
So pretty good.
And we're good, good bids.
Yep.
Okay, second, construction is pretty much halted on that. I'll let the, our drainage system is turned up. So if there was part of the equipment, they'll don't have receipts. This is going to get into the money mess all there. We have a pre-disaster conference last week, Wednesday, for the Chestnut Area with project. They're looking to start a nervous probably that first or second week in May, but they have started the manual recording in the last Monday. Some of that work done, so. Through this time of year, if you don't, you're going to have to arrange this. I found some of that I, I can skip into the system. So the station before has been a big problem for. Uh, what's your report, it's been a big problem for a lot of years, a lot of years, so, um. I warned the contractor that, um, so the reason we were lining them down, was that the usual, they do what they're getting into.
Right.
Part, so. Um, while I'm Westville for bids, and then sixty third streets all for this as well, so. That's the last of my list for you there.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Cool, okay. Alright, Brenton, you're up, what do you got?
Many things, I have one, uh. Live stream, no, I said, often, I have not seen the, any new updates from Tricorn. Last update I had received from them is, uh, they're waiting on a couple different video system parts, uh. Compared to H E M I equipment and U S B recording, like, uh, are on back order. That is, so that was sort of the last time they gave us an update, and I updated also, uh, it's expected to wonder right in April. Uh, with the H E M I items being expected in late June. Except they were checking to see if they could expedite the process and repeat this process. I wish I had other news on that one, but that's the latest update I have had from them, so.
And these, and were these parts just something that they recently realized that they didn't have, or how did they not?
Just we, we thought we got those parts, they were the ones that are like on the wall, like they're in a remodel, my understanding is they're remodel, they weren't removed. retained, so that's why we have. That, that's my understanding. So the removal of the cameras and system and everything that we have, uh, our staff actually took those down. It's the contractor, we're just trying to slow down, take everything down, and my decision is that was taking out walls and everything, that when they're uh, doing that more. So. I just want to make sure everybody knows that's the latest information I have, if you have any other, you know, getting other information, get everybody posted, we can have. Um, the other thing I had is introduce yeah, a couple new staff members, and one adjustment staff member, one adjustment, uh, Mark, a part-time public works employee, he was dropped to full-time. Basically, they left their, well, his position there is at four, and it's come on full-time, so we have all of our current full-time positions, all been in other bill, other works, we've got to be above that, uh, Mark is already, uh. He's been with the city at least since fifteen or sixteen, so he's been with the city for quite some time, helping us out part-time, um. He's now full-time, uh. So Jim herself is our building inspections admin assistant, she started here last week. And then we see a new base of noise here of Paul Eagle, he's backward by the window, he's hiding, he's our communication specialist, so follows her with uh, wide variety of communication outreaches and efforts and working with businesses and stuff, on that, those efforts in the past, so. Um, has some experience there, and we're excited to have.
Welcome.
Yeah, welcome, Paul. Everything?
Yep.
Alright, so we'll move on to portfolio reports. Um, but the only thing I've got is, uh, coming up this Thursday, there's a voice of vision with the Chamber of Commerce. Uh, Marcus Latrell is gonna be there, he is the guy that wrote the book on the lone survivor, he was the lone survivor in a event over in Afghanistan, he's got a lot of stories to tell, so I'm gonna be going to that event. I'll be on Thursday afternoon, so, they're net, that's all I've got right now, Sarah, what do you got?
Well, um, infrastructure, non-active with the meetings and bids and recon, uh, activities that we've been doing with other gaming margin. Um, also, I've gotten back out on the town, making an appointment to run with my dog to go check on uh, several of the activities in process, and so, um, really excited to see the vault finally set, that is an exciting thing. Um, and then obviously, getting down to near the Prairie view edition, uh, we were really battling with the water down there. We had some very significant issues that Monday that were brought, obviously, we mentioned with public works, they were out there in worse, everybody, tractors, pumps, line yards. We struggled because the ice, uh, everything melted so fast that the culverts were on the water, so we weren't able to steam everything. So we were actually in waders trying to get things busted loose, which was fun, um. But needless to say, it, it's been very hectic, so because of that, I don't have any further updates, but we have a lot left, it's just great, so hopefully those people are finding somebody now.
Good, well, it's good to hear. Alright, Naomi, what do you got?
Um, I did reach out to Brent, um, asking about the citywide, um, garage sales and spring cleanup. Um, just hoping we can lock in some dates for that, um, sooner rather than later, because I've had some people um, actually reach out to me and asking what that is gonna be taking place. Um, and I told them that I didn't want to give them anything that you had texted me, Brent, because I just didn't want to give out false information if you changed those dates. So, um, if we could lock those in as soon as possible.
We are trying to coordinate with waste management, want to make sure that that being locked in with waste management, they gave me one day, we're trying to get it. If they can move it out earlier, if they can't, or it just doesn't work out schedule wise, then what we'll have is maybe garage sale week. The name, we just keep the day, uh, probably mid-May for that, and we'll have a week off, and then a week after that would be the spring clean.
Perfect.
Like, yeah, spring clean after.
After, yeah, for sure.
People have something themselves.
That's smart.
You're right, you're right. So, but yes, uh, that's, we're just waiting, we're trying to lock that in.
Okay, um, another quick, um, reminder for me, Brent, dude, I know council talked, when we talked about our waste management. Were we, what were we doing with the cardboard thing? What, what, what did we come to a conclusion on that, I can't remember fully.
We're currently in some dumpsters, there are dumpsters due. However, we do not have space for it this minute.
Okay.
What other words say then? Scrammed in for state.
Yeah.
Uh, we do have our staff working on, um. Looking at what we could do, either gravelly, south of our big shop, or doing some privacy, or we can have a spot for the dumpsters, but yes, we'd like to get some covered areas. Spot, yeah.
Right, you know what, I had, okay, so I, I had a resident reach out to me today, actually, and I said I would bring this up, but however, I'm not sure I was fully understanding their full concerns, um. She's a resident of Horace, however, she lives on the outsides of town, um, and they have their own dumpster. Um, but she was really wanting to see if we could do more of like a recycle drop-off. I don't know what that looks like, um, she had mentioned some other communities she had lived in previously, had great areas that did this in town, I think she mentioned Vargas, Minnesota.
Virgus.
Virgus.
Virgus, yeah.
Um. Yeah. And so, I, you know, because I said, well, we have our waste management, um, containers in town. Um, however, she really wanted me to bring this up and see if there was a possibility of any way we could have like some kind of a drop-off for residents that may not have access to those. Um, because she is concerned about, um, the trash and you know, the, the earth, so, um. I wanted to just bring it up and just see if maybe there was like something we could maybe, maybe put containers, like maybe by the compost area, or I don't know, I just.
Let me talk to the management, see what they can do, uh, see if we can make a if it, if we have an area that makes sense for being a little more comprehensive of, uh, addressing recycling, like what you're talking about, um. Bringing that up here, I mean, also, I mentioned a while back, there were looking waste management on the credit, we're taking the off of their discount utility bills, so hoping that they resolve here very soon, we're hoping not on blast until we build, but.
Okay.
Excellent. Because of all the challenges we've had over the last couple months with them.
Yeah.
Uh, but I'll talk, I'll bring that up with them about the.
Yeah, check and, check and see.
I, I've seen it before.
Yeah, just a side note, though, because typically when you have standalone containers, it requires additional trucking.
Yeah.
If your person is concerned about the earth, if that, because that consumes a lot of the diesel, there's a lot of additional waste products, stuff like that, and there's a lot of additional costs to that. So see if they can manage to fit that stuff out, and if we have containers that could be utilized for that instead of doing a separate trucking.
I'll, I'll talk with them soon, since, yeah, it's one of those, typical sites that do really special trip door.
Yeah.
Uh, from what I see, they do, like even the cardboard, cardboard would be a separate trip, but, um, it's.
I'm open to it, let's see what we could work out there, so that we're not, see if they can combine it, so that we're not doing a bunch of additional.
I just told her I would, I had a meeting tonight, so I would definitely just bring it up, um, in conversation. And then, as far as my portfolio goes, I have a meeting with Jase, Jase, did we ever get a date?
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday, thanks, um, so I'll be meeting with Jase this week, uh, to discuss some upcoming projects, um, that are gonna be coming to planning and zoning. And, um. I think that's it.
Okay, alright.
My report.
Okay, Jeff, what do you got?
Uh, I've been gone for the past few weeks, so I really don't have a report, um, I do have, uh, just one thing for Metro Cog, uh, they did uh, make an offer to, uh, one of the applicants for the executive director position, I believe they did accept it, um, so they will have a new executive director starting approximately about a month, maybe a little bit longer than that.
Are they local?
They are from, uh, the Rochester area.
Okay. Anything else?
That is it.
Alright. Okay, so we're to the point in the show here, we got the executive session, so I'll read this part of it, the executive session held pursuant to N D C C four four dash oh four dash nineteen point one subsection nine. Discuss negotiating strategies, provide negotiating instructions to our attorney and other negotiator uh, regarding contracts for purchase of real property related to the Wall Avenue project, so we'll take five minutes here, everybody in this, regroup. Yep. Uh, yeah, go ahead, really, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Just a little bit of start.
Okay.
I apologize, I appreciate it. Alan, by the way, it sounds good. And, uh, I'm a member of the Special Assessment Commission, I think some of you know, but I'm not seeking for the commission, taking for a guy who likes rock and roll, I believe.
Yes, you do.
Next month, uh, you folks are gonna have a difficult decision to make, whether or not to extend the property tax, a certain abatement for new residential construction. I don't recall if it was Naomi or Steph yet, I think it was Steph, my apologies if I've gotten it wrong, but done some researches to the reason for the program's existence in the first place. I found that research rather enlightening. And you all clearly got the attention of the real estate community, they packed this house. And now I hear, and I have to emphasize, I hear because I have no direct knowledge of it, that there is an effort being organized to recall or in some way remove at least one of you from the city council on the decision. I'm told at least one Realtor is involved in this effort. One Realtor. Think about that. I also get that they're clearly looking out for their pockets. Well, I'm looking out for mine. And that's what I wish to discuss with you briefly tonight, and the two issues are intertwined. Special assessments are paying in some ways for the growth here in Horace. Uh, the roundabout is a prime example, and I know you all, at least some of you took a beating over that whole issue, the way that was handled. Then take a look at the size of the assessment district for the Wall Avenue project, that's largely necessitated by the, uh, rural west of the river. Why am I, for one, paying for that? And what's of the people who live east of the river, north of Wall Avenue? And even a better example is, is one the Special Assessment Commission got stuck with last year, the Maple River Development. Again, special assessments were levied on people in an established neighborhood in that particular case who really have little initial benefit from the improvements in order for, in order, uh, in order to service a new development. Special assessments for new residential developments are a direct benefit for the developer, almost a subsidy. Again, a benefit for the developer, almost a subsidy. There was a letter to the editor in the forum this week, I don't know if any of you saw it or not, that made the case uh, that though the topic the writer addressed wasn't special for tax incentive Horace, it's for downtown Vargas, I definitely struck a chord with me, and instead in part. You've got this quote, developers do not need the money, and if they do, there are things called banks where a person can borrow the money to do what they need to do. If the bank won't give them money, then why should the city, and I read that, to be taxpayer, to bear the burden? The writer finishes, end the incentives, end the special. And that's my message to you tonight, as you contemplate what you're going to do about this tax evasion issue, and I, I'm darn glad I'm not sitting in your seat. It's a tough one. But I want you to consider this, end specials for new residential development, period. There's a lot of other things I'd like to talk with you about tonight, but I'm not gonna waste any more of your time, I'll do it another time. This zero lot line business that we've got going north of the cemetery, east of Cheyenne. I just, I don't understand, I can see little pockets here and there, but a whole development like that makes no sense to me.
Sorry, clarifying what zero lot line you're referring.
You need their room to put a volleyball net between two, between two houses, in that whole development.
On South Hill.
South Hill.
But that, but that's another subject, I don't, I don't want to get off track here.
Yeah.
So I wanted to bring this to the commission, as you know, our council, as you know, uh, the Special Assessment Commission passed a resolution of a, uh. I'm not what you call it, but asking you to, to consider this, and, and I, and I'm asking you to consider this as you consider this tax evasion. And I thank you, Paul, for the give me, given me two minutes here tonight.
Thanks, Al. Appreciate it.
Okay, so now we'll take the five minutes.